...on the stage, helpful to know who the cast of players is. So, starting over on this side, Carl Steinhardt, our chief administrative officer. Then, our three-person select board, Russ Fox, Chairman Doug, or Chairperson Doug Mowgli and Joe Deedee coming on stage. Our Councilman Ben Coyle does a nice job for us. Michelle Hill, our town clerk. And now the test. So Laura Fletcher, our relatively new town accountant. Rich was here with us last year. Melinda Windate works with her. And then I'm going to go to the chief chief for the finance committee here, Sheila Chamberlain. And then Rich Beulie, our chair, and Terry Mish, Charlie Condrin, and Art Penel. We certainly appreciate their service. I have appointed three tellers to count folks, should we need to do that. And so, over here, Mike Smith, if you would raise your hand, thank you. And Mike is going to count the right section here, just the right section. And then the center section, Diane Mason has volunteered to do that. Diane Mason, our, and so appreciate that. And then Paul Conley will count the left section and the stage. So, that's kind of a method to the, uh, how we do things. I'm going to, um... Next thing, the senior government on this class, who is handling the sound booth for us and the microphones, and really appreciate that. So in the sound booth, Noah Harramit. And then doing the microphones, Madeline Frye, Julia Fox, David Sheen, Chloe Emmes, Liz Tendrelis, Brian Roy, Nicole Willie, and William Carroll. And I believe their class teacher is here with them as well. We have a number of people who are not voters in the town of Southwick, who are seated on the town meeting floor. I'm going to read you a list of those and then ask for a motion and a second to allow them to participate on certain articles from an informational standpoint. You're not allowed to vote, even though we allow you to sit on the town meeting floor. So, let me see if I got the list reasonably correct here. We've got Barbara Hopson from the Massachusetts State Department of Agriculture. We've got Pastor Dan Malin from the Living Home Church. And then up on the stage, Michelle Hill, Benjamin Coyle. Then back out in the audience or on the floor, David McCarty, our chief of the Southwick Police Department, Detective Sergeant Landis, Southwick Police Department, Chris Feria from the Southwick DPW, Jen Willard, Steve Presnov from the Regional School District, Cindy Sullivan, Council on Aging Director, and Richard Raedlin. Did I get all of the non-voters who are seated among us? And who goes the other way? Diane Caruso. So, that's the list. Can I have a motion to bring those folks onto the town? And a second. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. And that's carried. At this point, I would like to have a moment of silence for some folks who served the town very well and have passed since the last town meeting. And so, I'm going to read their names, ask for a moment of silence, and then we will stand and do the pledge and one other thing. So, John Edsabula was a police officer for many years. Frances LaBranche, part-time park and rec. Michelle Ackerman was on the park and rec and planning board. Millie Roosevelt, senior center volunteer. Sue Sanders, volunteer in many capacities. Trudy Adrich, senior center volunteer. Steve Sebald, also a volunteer. And Randy Odell likewise a volunteer. So, if we could have a moment of silence for those folks, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to ask you to rise. We'll do the pledge together. When we finish the pledge, I'd ask you to stay standing for a few moments. And I'm going to go off script a little bit tonight before we get underway with the business. So, let's do the pledge. My pledge, ladies and gentlemen.
...to declare the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in thy soul, and in thy heart. Amen.
And please stay standing. At this time, and this is way off the script, but with everything going on in town, I thought it was important for us here tonight to think about the four relatively recent veterans who gave their lives in the service of their country and perhaps to pass a resolution on their behalf. And I think a lot of you know this, but the four people that I know of that since the Korean conflict gave their lives in the service of their country are as follows. Richard W. Power, who grew up on his family's dairy farm on Hillside Road and attended Southwick Schools in the class of 1966. He joined the Army serving as a private first-class infantryman in the Seventh Cavalry, First Cavalry Division. He was killed in Plagueville Province on August 8th, 1966. William R. Almond Jr., Billy to everybody who knew him, class of 1966, was drafted in 1969 and killed in action in 1970. Billy served in the U.S. Army and died at the rank of private first class. His gold star mother is Marie Almond, who still resides in Southwick. Stephen B. Wentworth, class of 1981, joined the U.S. Marine Corps in 1981 and was killed in the bombing of the Beirut Marine Bouth barracks in 1983. He died at the rank of corporal. His gold star mother is Elaine Ochenbach of Westfield. Travis J. Fuller, class of 1997, graduated from the Mass Maritime Academy in 2001 and was commissioned second lieutenant in the U.S. Marine Corps. He was killed in action in 2005 in Iraq. His parents are David and Joanne Fuller of Granville. I think there's some Southwick family connections there as well. So, I'd like to offer a resolution, and I'll read it briefly here. And then if somebody would be so willing, I'd ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll vote to adopt it. The resolution reads as follows. "The 2018 Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Southwick, Massachusetts recognizes and remembers with gratitude the following members of our community who served in our country's armed forces since 1960 and paid the ultimate sacrifice with their lives. Richard W. Power, U.S. Army. William R. Almond, U.S. Army. Stephen B. Wentworth, U.S. Marine Corps. Travis J. Fuller, U.S. Marine Corps. They fulfilled their duty with valor, camaraderie to their fellow soldiers, and love of country. We miss them, but will never forget them. Our community sends its love and gratitude to the families of these local heroes. We honor all that have served our nation in the armed forces since 1775." Is there a motion? And a second? All in favor, please say aye. Please be seated. Again, I introduce myself at the beginning of the previous meeting. We are going to convene the annual town meeting at this time. My name is James Putnam. I reside at five Rising Corner Road here in town. I am your elected town moderator in that capacity, presiding over annual and special town meetings. But I ask each of you, as we recognize you tonight, to clearly state your name and address. And by the way, wait for one of the student volunteers to bring your microphone. I know a lot of you say, "Everybody can hear me." And quite frankly, in this room, they can't hear you, or we can't, you know, not all of us can hear you. So, please wait for the microphone. It'll take only a few seconds to get it to you, and it makes for so much better meeting if everybody can hear you, so blah. Again, name and address. Again, you may say, "Everybody knows who I am," but usually that's not the case, and it certainly helps bring things along. So, at this point, I'm going to recognize town clerk Michelle Hill for the reading of the town meeting warrant.
Annual Town Action Tuesday, May 8, 2018, at 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Southwick Town Hall, 454 College Highway, precincts 1, 2, and 3. Annual Town Meeting Tuesday, May 15, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. at the Southwick Regional High School, 93 Feeding Hills Road and the uptown, to either the constables of the town of Southwick and County of Hammond.
Mr. Moderator, I agree that we dispense with the reading of the warrants in time to enact on each item in the bid. And is there a second? Motion made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the warrant. At this time, we will obviously act on each of the articles separately and certainly give a brief introduction to each article as we go. All in favor of dispensing with the reading at this time, please say aye. Those opposed, say no. Here we begin.
Hence, as said, Southwick, this 27th day of April, the year of the Lord 2018. Select Board Doug Mowgli, Chairman Joseph Day, Deedee, Place Chairman Russell S. Fox, Clerk. Pursuant to within the warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Southwick by posting up protested copies of the same at three public places and said "town" seven days before the date thereof, as within directed. Signed by the Constable William Terry Jr. and myself, Michelle Aldeles, Town Clerk. Posted at the Town Hall, Post Office, and Library.
Alrighty, so that brings us to Article 2 on page 2. And I'm going to, the first four articles are housekeeping articles, and I'm going to try to group those together for your speed consideration. So, Article 2 has to do with preparing the various reports which you have been already received. And Article 3 authorizes the Board of Selectmen to appoint minor officers, but we have to reauthorize those each year through a town meeting vote. So again, we're going to consider Article 2 and Article 3 together. Is there a motion? And a second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on Articles 2 and 3, housekeeping articles? Hearing none, I'll call, vote all in favor, please say aye. And those opposed, say no. Articles 4 and 5 likewise are housekeeping, but they do have a financial importation, so I'll ask the Finance Committee for their recommendation. Article 4 authorizes the Board of Selectmen to sell or trade obsolete equipment under the established state rules for doing so. There's a very exacting process for doing that, which we've discussed in previous meetings. And then Article 4 is to apply and accept any grants that may be available from state of Mass, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, federal government, and so forth. Do we have a Finance Committee recommendation? How about a motion? And a second? Okay, I heard the second somewhere. Any discussion on Articles 4 and 5? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. And those opposed, say no. We're on to Article 6. And again, repetition for those who've been here for the earlier meeting. I am not going to read each article in its entirety. We assume literacy, the material's been out there in various formats, written, online, and so forth. And certainly, if you've got a question, or you don't understand the wording, or you want additional explanation, that's, we want to spend our time doing that type of thing and not listening to me, I kind of drew on reading some of these lengthy articles. So, Article 6, purchase of dump truck. At this time, we'll vote to, we'll appropriate $240,000 or any other amount to pay costs of purchasing and equipping a full-size multi-use dump truck for the use of the Department of Public Works and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To determine whether this amount should be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing, or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto, and that's requested by the DPW and Select Board, and ask for a recommendation of Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends that the town vote, the sum of $240,000 is appropriated to pay the cost of purchasing and equipping a full-time multi-use dump truck for the purpose of the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL Section C44, Paragraph 7 Sub 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds and notes approved by this vote or pursuant to any other vote of the town heretofore adopted, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment or cost approved by this vote in accordance with MGL Section C44, Sub, Section, or excuse me, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed and paid such costs by a like amount.
Alright, Select Board, any comment on that or on DPW directive? Respond to questions? Want to say anything, Randy? Go ahead.
Randy Brown, 95 Fred Jackson Road, DPW Director. This is a request to replace an existing vehicle we have. It's 2,000 sterling, has about 9,400 wells on it. These trucks are used for our flooring, all of our heavy hauling, heavy stone, gravel, and other heavy materials. Unfortunately, this truck did suffer some damage over its past warranty and is now non-driving.
Okay, open for discussion on Article 6, a question or comment. Gentlemen down here, if we can get a microphone right in the middle there.
Ryan Pease, 180, more fighting. I thought last year we approved for a truck. Is this the same thing, or is this another truck? So, it's going to be two trucks? Did you end up buying the truck last year? Okay.
For those in the back who didn't hear the response, it is a different truck than the one approved last year. Another question or a comment? Lady back here, about three-quarters of the way back, you're heading the right direction there.
Karen DeMaio, hi, no. I'm not questioning the need of the truck, but last year we approved $200,000 for a dump truck, and this year it's now $240,000 for a dump truck. What is the reason for such a drastic increase? If anyone here?
Go ahead, Randy. We can get a microphone over here, please.
I believe it was $238,000 last year. $238.
Okay, question over here, on the right. On my right.
Joseph, 90, 97, Flashlight. Why did the truck get banned? What happened to have to get a new one?
It was a moment, about 3 o'clock in the morning, and the most likely cause was the U-joint fail, which caused the drive shaft to drop and never ended well.
Other questions or comments on Article 6, purchase of a dump truck? Seeing none, okay, I'm going to call a vote. This does require a two-thirds vote, since it does authorize a borrowing, which always requires a two-thirds vote. So, let's try my voice first. All in favor of Article 6, please say aye. And those opposed, say no. I hear a majority, a large majority saying, "Approving, yes." I hear about 10 people saying, "No." I'm going to observe that that's a two-thirds majority vote. Would anybody like to contest that and ask for a counted hand vote? Just raise your hand, and we'll go ahead and do it. Nothing wrong with verifying. Everybody okay that that's a two-thirds yes vote? Okay, then we'll move on. Article 7, purchase of two fire trucks. To see if the town will appropriate $1,200,000 or any other amount to pay costs of purchasing and equipping a ladder truck and a pumper truck for the use of the fire department and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto. And that's requested by the fire department and Select Board. And what is the Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends that the town vote that the sum of $1,200,000 is appropriated to pay the costs of purchasing and equipping a ladder truck and a pumper truck for the use of the fire department and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to MGL Section 44, Paragraph 7 Sub 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds and notes approved by this vote or pursuant to any other vote of the town heretofore adopted, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL Section 44, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed and paid such costs by a like amount.
Alright, or Select Board or Fire Chief?
Recognize Fire Chief.
Okay, then I'll recognize our Fire Chief, Russ Anderson.
Good evening. Russ Anderson, 28, Davis Road. So, if you remember last year, we were here, we voted approved a apparatus study to review our apparatus fleet. In that fleet study that was done by a third party, a couple of things came to light. We knew we had two vehicles that were at the end of their life expectancy at 25 to 30-year mark. What it forced us to do was look at how we do business, what our, how we respond to our apparatus, our staffing. The town has invested in career staffing during the daytime, so all those things came into play. And what we found out was that we could actually do this a little different. We had two decisions to make. We either go down the road that we continually used to go down and replace a truck every five to seven years, and these trucks escalate from 500 to 700,000, et cetera. Or we take a different route, and we pull one vehicle out of service, and we combine some of them. So, in the projected 10-year span, the plan that we're presenting tonight actually saves about $750,000, because we're not going to replace one vehicle. Yes, we're replacing two vehicles at once, but it also gives us, and the town, for other things, breathing room for approximately 10 years for another vehicle. So, while it sounds a little steep, when you look at the total picture over a 10-year period, other finances going on in the town, the Finance Committee and Select Board have approved, this was the best way to do it. The vehicles were repicked, are conservative vehicles, they aren't, you know, they aren't the top of the line, and they're what we think will do the job. So, we think we put a good package together, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, open for discussion under Article 7. Is there a question for the chief or a comment? Sir, over here on my right, if we can get a microphone back there, that baseball hat. Again, I'm sorry, it's a man, I couldn't tell what the baseball hat.
Sorry, tomboys. Gina Patterson, 1000 Ridge, chief question. So, you're going to, you're going to buy two pieces of equipment that are going to age at the same time, so would logic kind of dictate we end up having to revisit this again with the lifespan?
Hopefully, hopefully not. Typically, a ladder truck, which is one of them, it's a combination ladder popper, typically goes 30 years. An engine would typically go 20 to 25 years, so that should have a projected. Now, that's saying based on today's standards and everything else, but sometimes the national standards that we go to change in the midst of things. So, while I think we would have a five to 10-year window between the two down the road, that's the best I can ever do.
So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't consider staggering it, so it wouldn't hit all that same time?
We did look at that, however, two things. The industry typically will increase the cost from, you know, 4% to 7% annually, so if you start putting out another vehicle that's worth, say, 300,000 or 400,000, five years from now, the difference you're losing is really pretty high.
And what's the cost that we can incur for the sale of those two?
Well, it's pretty much scrap metal, quite honestly, it's about $5,000.
Other questions or comments on Article 7? Okay. Right there with the microphone.
Hi, Cynthia Marshall, 56 Rosewood Lane. Chief, is there anything wrong with our ladder truck right now and pumper truck?
Well, that's a big question.
Well, have, have there been major repairs?
Yes, there's been, in the last four or five years, we've spent about $40,000 on repairs for that truck. The, we know right now that we have antifreeze in the oil, so we know that the motor, it's been out for three different evaluations, and we're basically changing the oil every two or three months. We know there's a motor repair too, that's close to 40,000 to 50,000. If we repair that truck with a new motor, we know that the transmission and the pump will be soon a problem.
And how old is that truck?
30 years.
Oh, it is a 30 years already?
Yeah, yeah, I know.
And how many times in the last 12 or year has the, has it gone out for service?
So, about a five years.
On, on service, on, on call?
Well, it goes, it'll go at any major call, but its actual use was about 30 times a year, with the ladder up for various reasons or being support.
Various reasons like what?
That goes to its backup or some overexcitation, and keep in mind, it's a ladder truck and a pumper as well, so it might support water supply as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments under Article 7? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote. Again, requires a two-thirds vote because of the borrowing involved. All in favor of Article 7, as consented, please say aye. And those opposed, say no. And that is passed by a two-thirds majority. I hear approximately five people saying no. Does anybody contest my calling of that vote? Again, there's no, no harm, no, no harm to call if you want to take a counted hand vote. Okay. Let's move on to Article 8. Construction of new pump station. To see if the town will appropriate $1,700,000 or any other amount to pay costs of relocating the current College Highway pump station to a new location closer to the town line, also on College Highway, and second, decommissioning as needed. One or both of the current College Highway and north along Yaret Road pump stations, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To determine whether this amount shall be raised by taxation, transfer from available funds, borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto. That's requested by the Water Commissioners. And again, call on the Finance Committee for their recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends that the town vote, the sum of $1,700,000 is appropriated to pay costs of, one, relocating the current College Highway pump station to a new location closer to the town line, also on College Highway. College Highway pump station to a new location closer to the town line, also on College Highway, and two, decommissioning as needed, one or both of the current College Highway and North Long Yard Road pump stations, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, one, the vote of the town adopted under Article Eight of the warrant at the two thousand seventeen annual town meeting is amended to permit the ex, the expenditure of four hundred thousand dollars of the four hundred thousand dollars authorized to be borrowed pursuant to that vote to pay the cost of upgrading the current College Highway and North Long Yard Road pump stations to pay a like amount of the cost of this project. And number three, the treasurer with the approval, the selectman is authorized to borrow an additional million, three hundred thousand dollars under and pursuant to MGL Chapter forty-four, Paragraph seven and eight, or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds and notes approved by this vote or pursuant to any other vote of the town heretofore adopted, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds and notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-four, Paragraph twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. The treasurer is further authorized to obtain all or any portion of this borrowing through the US Department of Agriculture. The amount authorized to be borrowed by this vote shall be reduced to the extent of any grants received by the town on account of this project.
All right, uh, this time I'm going to call on EPW Chief Randy Brown to add any color, if you will, uh, to what's going on, uh, with this particular article.
Randy Brown, ninety-five, Fred Jackson Road, EPW Director. So this time last year, we had an article, uh, which approved to, uh, four hundred thousand dollars to rehabilitate two pump stations, one College Highway and one of North Long Yard Road. So we're going through the process of, um, designing a little rehabilitation project and we met with Sprinkle Water Sewer because of our project going in with similar pipelines. And at that meeting, there was a curveball. They said that they are changing their treatment process and the water that we currently draw from their system will no longer be treated. And because they had a surface water source, if you want to use that water for on-treatable purposes, you will need to treat that water internally. And unfortunately, the location of the pump station on College Highway is not a position where we can actually provide our own water to those residents and businesses north of that pump station. Uh, so in order to accommodate all those residents where, um, we can provide our own water, um, to all the residents in town, we need to relocate this pump station to a new, new location. And we do have an agreement, um, with the property owner, we'll talk about this later on, tell me the location of that, of that pump station. But this will give us responsibility to provide our own water to the entire town as well as to provide water for Sprinkle Water Sewer, treat it, um, also to the entire town.
All right, uh, we are open for discussion on Article Eight, a question or a comment? Uh, see a hand back up here, if we can get a microphone up to the back on my left.
Hi, about the town, this is forty-five, Davis Road. I read this, just searched on Article Eight, it said water can be left untreated, could be a health issue. It would not be in compliance with the safety law regulations. But if that statement's true, how can Sprinkle sell it to us?
Can we get a microphone over here to Randy, please? And, and let's just keep, keep that one back there for a moment, please.
Justin. Uh, so yeah, we have to treat it, obviously, that's why we need a new pump station, that will, at the new College Highway pump station, with a new treatment facility so we can treat it so it will be safe for portable water use.
Again, if it's not up to state regulation, how can Sprinkle sell us their groundwater?
Uh, it's, they're selling us, they will be selling us their filtered water. So they draw water from Grandwell Reservoir, they pump it to, um, West Parish Filters in West Hill where they filter it, and at that point, it goes cross country to Proven Mountain. Right now, they treat it at West Parish Filters, so what we're drawing, and our, our service staff is after that West Parish Filter. They are gonna change that and move the treatment process to Proven Mountain. So we will be drawing in raw filtered water and we can treat that with appropriate chemicals and we can make it safe for portable water use. That's no different than what Sprinkle Water does now.
Other discussion on Article Eight? Seeing none, uh, again, requires a two-thirds vote. Uh, all in favor of Article Eight, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
I am gonna call for counted vote on that so the tellers would rise. Um, uh, and again, uh, you know, here's the deal, uh, please, when I call, the ayes, raise your hands, keep them there until the counters have had a chance to, uh, uh, you know, tally, uh, because if you keep your hand up for, you know, a minute or so and you're in the back of the room, they, and, and bring it back down, it may not count it yet, so, uh, be patient with them, uh, takes, uh, they're, they're very careful as they're doing this. Uh, again, one other thing, uh, came up a few years ago, uh, but if you think you see a non-voter, uh, voting, uh, you, you have a responsibility to alert me to that, so, uh, you know, uh, let me know, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. On my right?
Seventeen.
And on my left and stage, Paul?
Thirty-six.
And Diane, what do you got in the center?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five. All right, thank you. And now, those voting no, please raise your hands and keep them there till we've got Uh, on my right?
Seven.
Seven. And on my left?
Two.
Two. And in the center, Diane?
Nineteen.
I'll let somebody else do the math, but the vote is one hundred and eight to twenty-eight, which is a two-thirds, uh, majority unless somebody corrects my, yeah, I'm watching that. So, uh, uh, thank you for that, thank you for tellers and, and, uh, we've got our voting procedure down. So now we're going to move ahead to the annual budget. And I hope you've all got a copy of the finance committee report, which includes, uh, the budget, because we're gonna work from that, uh, and try to, uh, kind of break it up into bite-sized pieces here or, uh, maybe meal it to the public rather than bite-sized pieces, because several of them are fairly lengthy. Uh, I'm gonna ask you to turn to page one, which is about three pages in, uh, and you'll see a page that up at the top left corner says general fund, okay? Just to get you oriented. Uh, and the line item totals that we will be voting on tonight are in that far right, uh, column. So you see about, uh, five columns of numbers. Uh, the first four are there for comparison purposes, so they show you what the budget has been in the current fiscal year and prior fiscal years, but we're not voting on that just for reference purposes. Um, so right-hand column that says bincom, FY nineteen budget, that's where the numbers are, uh, that we're, uh, voting on tonight. So I'm gonna take you through some of these, or all of the sections eventually, uh, and we're going to group them by how they're grouped at the, uh, financial accounts of the town, uh, and there, there is a rhyme or reason, and that sometimes looks a little funny when you see what some of the categories are, but there is a, a glow to that, uh, from, from the town's charter accounts. And so I'm gonna go through what those categories are, I'm not gonna read to the numbers, um, but, uh, when we get to the end of the section, I'll give you the line item total, I'll ask for the finance committee recommendation, uh, and then we'll open it up for discussion. One thing within that section that we just, uh, went over, so, uh, rather than dealing with about twenty-five pages all at once, uh, we'll be dealing with no more than six pages, uh, at a time. So, uh, bear with me, we'll, we'll, we'll get through this. So, uh, first, uh, category is general government, starting on page five, uh, and the categories are moderator salary, operations, then selectmen elected salary, salaries, operations, then chief administrative, uh, officer salary and operations, then the reserve fund, and at the very bottom of page one, the finance committee salary account. Then flipping over to page two, uh, finance committee operations, then the reserve for wage negotiations, then the accounting department, salaries, operations, capital, municipal audit, then the assessors department, elected salaries, uh, and then salaries for staff, uh, then on the top of page three, operations, uh, and capital, then the town parks office, salaries, operations, capital, legal ads. Then at the very bottom of page three, legal operations, top of page four, uh, labor negotiator operations, uh, tax title operations, then, uh, the board of registrars, uh, and again, we're on page four now, election registration, salaries, operations, capital. Then, uh, in the middle of page four, conservation commission, salaries, operations, capital. And at the bottom, uh, planning board, salaries, operations, capital. Then board of appeals, and we're now over on page five, uh, salaries, operations, capital. Now economic development, operations, then computer salary, operations, and capital. Over to page six, town hall salaries, and that's the, uh, various, uh, custodial and maintenance and so forth. Uh, operations, and then capital, and then, uh, very last line item at the bottom of page six, uh, is for the annual town report, uh, which is a required, uh, publication to, to, uh, grant, uh, information to all of us. Uh, and so that is the general government category, uh, and the font keeps getting smaller or my eyes are getting older, uh, but I, I'm reading two million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, uh, for total recommended for general government. And with that, I'll ask for the finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends public government, uh, amount of three, two hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, now, any questions or comments on any of those categories on pages one through six, all having to do with general government, uh, salaries, operations, and capital? Any questions? Seeing none, okay, sir, uh, can we get a microphone back to this gentleman?
How is the adjustment made?
Name and street, please.
My name's Bruce Mason, forty-six, Lake Monseer. How is the adjustment from year to year made? Is there a set percentage that you have adjusted as far as the amount, or is that just, uh, individually set?
Rich, why don't you give us kind of a brief overview of the budget process and the hearings and so forth?
Usually in the month of February or March, the individual departments receive their invited packages and essentially each department fills out what some call the wish list of what they would like to see for all these particular line items for their given department. Subsequent to that, when everything's turned in, there are two meetings held on Saturday, two finance committee and the select board, and the various department heads present their budgets to the combined meeting. Subsequent to that, uh, and any questions can be asked and answered and discussed at the, at the meeting, which is open to the public incidentally. Then subsequent to that, uh, each group returns to their areas, deliberates, and then usually end of April or March, early May, we meet with the select board and we review each of our decisions and generally come to a common ground, and this is what your, the common ground is what you're looking at.
Rich, in terms of the original question, is it fair to say there is no set amount or percentage, uh, that's applied against the various line items?
Not unless the department arbitrarily uses the previous year as their benchmark.
That was the original question. Any other questions on general government? Okay, lady down here? And then we'll go to the upper right corner after that.
Sally Andrea, six Winfield Circle. Um, in the town clerk salary section, the second line item is assistant treasurer co-actress salary.
What page are we on, salary? Three?
Three, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, it has been in the forty-five, forty-six thousand dollar category right up until last year at forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty. It has jumped to ninety-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight. But also, the next line item, which is clerical salaries, has been in the seventy-six, seventy-seven thousand dollar range, and that dropped to forty-one thousand. Is that connected or the reason?
I'm gonna recognize Town Court Michelle, she'll be able to respond to the questions
One of the clerical positions was moved to an assistant to give us more flexibility to be able to attend to the residents' needs.
Uh, there was a question up in the, yes, uh, mic up in the end.
All right, Michael Smith, seventy-five, Eastside Road. Just point information on the feasibility study for the municipal buildings on basics, just what that is and how that comes about, please.
So while they're getting the microphone down there, we're on page, uh, six, and a line item having to do with a feasibility study.
That is correct. That appropriation was requested as a result of, uh, a number of different departments and committees coming before the select board and the finance committee during the budget process that were, um, looking at what their capital needs are gonna be for the five municipal buildings we have. Uh, we have quite a list of things that we're looking at for the future, so rather than just having them all individually, what we wanted to do was to have the feasibility study taken with the assistance of an architect and an engineer so that we could itemize every item that would need to be done for all five municipal buildings over a number of years so that we could prioritize what those items would be and the timeframe and which time to take them. Because we're, we're getting to the point where we're gonna need new roofing systems, gutters, um, some elevator work and some other issues, so we really need to evaluate, um, what needs to come in one order so that we can program properly.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the general government section of the annual budget? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. It's near unanimous, there might have been one or two noes out there, but it's a majority vote. But we're going to move on, we're going to start at the top of page seven and do the public safety categories. So the first one is police department, there's salaries and operations. Then over to page eight, capital, dispatcher salaries, dispatcher operations. Then at the bottom of page eight, we start on the fire department, salaries, moving over to nine, operations, then capital. And then at the bottom of page nine, public safety building operation. Then turning the page to 10, we have the public safety building capital. Then moving to another department building, inspector, salaries, operations, capital. Middle of page 10, emergency management, salaries, operations, capital. And then over at the top of page 11, animal control, salaries, operations, capital. Then lake management, salary, operations, capital, and lake restoration, operations, and total public safety, $3,018,566. Finance committee recommendation on public safety.
Finance committee recommends in public safety amount of $3,018,566.
Okay, open for discussion. Anything in the public safety budgets on pages seven through eleven, the ones that we just read through? Question or comment on public safety? I don't see any hands, last call. Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the line item total, again, $3,018,566, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. And carried by a majority, I do note that there's one or two no votes. We're going to move on to page 12, and these are public works department budgets. So at the very top of page 12, gas and oil. Then DPW highway division, salaries, operations, capital. Then DPW highway winter road salaries. Over on page 13, winter road operations, then street lighting, then DPW road machinery operations, capital. Then DPW engineering division, operations, capital. Then towards the bottom of page 13, chapter 90 division. And then we started to solid waste salaries. Turning the page to 14, we have solid waste operations, solid waste capital. And then total public works, the pages 12 through 14 that we just reviewed, $1,731,201. Again, finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends total public works of $1,731,201.
Okay, open for discussion. A question or a comment on public works pages 12 through 14? Seeing none, above vote. Again, line item total, $1,731,201. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Very unanimously. The next section is very short, it's other environmental. It's the sewer implementation committee and the sewer implementation operations. Line item total of $2,948, what's the finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends other, total other environmental in the amount of $2,948.
Okay, any discussion on other environmental? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Carried unanimously. Next section is human services. Again, we're in the middle of page 14, so cemetery operations and capital. Then board of health salaries, over onto page 15, operations, capital. Then council on aging, salaries, operations, capital. And then the last category in this section is veterans services. And the line item total here is $304,501 for total human services. What's your recommendation?
Finance committee recommends total human services in the amount of $304,501.
So question or a comment on any of the human services line items? Okay, sir? Let's get a microphone back over here. And if you could specify what page and what category you're on, that would be helpful.
Hey, Mason, 53 Costa Road. I'm at page 15. I'm just clerical part-time position of $41,000. Is that one person? My question? That seems like a lot.
So you're on council on aging salaries on the clerical part-time category, is that right?
Yeah. Seems like a lot of the part-time. Yes. That's...
That's two people.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on human services? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please, and line item total is $304,501, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Very unanimously. Our next category, beginning at the bottom of page 15, is culture and recreation. So we start with library salaries, move over to 16, operations, capital. Then next category is park and recreation salaries, then operations, over on page 17, capital for park and rec. Then cultural council operations, and historical operations, channel 15 salaries, channel 15 operations, and channel 15 capital. For a total, culture and recreation, $558,346. And finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends total cultural recreation of $558,346.
Okay, open for discussion on culture and recreation. Anybody? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Very unanimously. Our next category is debt and interest. And so the first leg of that is principal on the debt that's already been incurred. And then turning over to page 18, the interest on that debt, and then employee benefits mid-page, and then the casualty insurances. So for a total for debt, interest, and insurance, $1,829,667. And ask for the finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends total debt, interest, and insurance of $1,829,667.
Any questions there? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Do you want to vote the total general government at this point, or are we moving ahead with the other category? That's unnecessary, okay. So we're going to go now to the enterprise budgets, and it always comes up every year, and so I'm going to venture an explanation before we get the question. But the categories, the general government categories that we've just voted on over the last 20 minutes or so, all come out of tax revenues, the real estate taxes, excise taxes, state funding that may be received, those types of sources. The next three enterprise budgets that you are going to be approving are user funded. So those in town who are on the municipal water system, through their water fees, they pay for the water enterprise. There are no general tax revenues involved. That's why it gets spiked out separately here at the end. So they're funded, the revenues that fund these budgets come from a different place. So the first one is water, elected salaries, and then salaries, and then operations. Then over to the top of page 20, capital, and then their debt and their interest. And then they carry a salary reserve account at the very bottom there, and their employee benefits are listed. And so the grand total for the water division of the water enterprise is $1,674,854. And the finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends total of water, $1,674,854.
Any questions there? Yes, sir. Mr. Gunn, let's get a microphone over here.
David Gunn, Tudicry Lane. A question for Randy with regards to the user fees that pay for this water budget. Is the pumping station cost also covered by user fees, or is that covered by the fund from the general tax revenue? And the reason I ask is not everybody uses town water. So wondering what the funding for which area, the funding for that would come from?
Yeah, Randy Brown, 95, Jackson, DPW Director. So any costs associated with the water department are paid for by the water user fees? So the pump station group project will be paid for through the water system, water users?
Any other questions or comments on water division pages 19 and 20? If you're still following the document. Okay, then I'll call the vote. All in favor, again, line item total for all categories, $1,674,854. Please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Very unanimously. Next one on page 21 is the sewer department. Again, you have salaries, operations, capital, a salary reserve, principal on the debt that's been incurred, interest on the debt that's been incurred. Line item, grand total, $1,449,398. What's the finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends total sewer expenditures of oddly in $449,398.
Okay, any questions on the sewer enterprise? Seeing none, I'll call... Okay. Where are the hands? Okay, lady up here, this time I know the deal. Can't hide behind the hat.
I have a general question as it relates to the budget, and maybe I'm overlooking it. So you're telling us what the cost is to run the government, but I've never seen any revenue of what we actually take in to actually understand what we're paying out for the same period. So I'm just curious how, is that public knowledge?
It is, it certainly is public knowledge, and I'm going to ask, do you want to take that to show, or, Rich? And if you could refer to the town report, that would be very helpful. On page 74, the town report. We're a little off topic, but it's a great question, so I'm going to allow us to get an answer. Everybody's looking at each other up here like, you know, you do it, oh, you do it. So I'll do it. Page 74 of your annual town report, I'm just going to give you a couple of numbers. But for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2017, which would be last year, so we don't have the total for the current fiscal year, which wouldn't be until this June 30th. But so I'm looking, and I'm going to look at the column that says actual budgetary basis, and so $17,701,000 from property taxes, $1,347,000 from excise and other taxes, or, excuse me, from state receipts, then $1,378,000 from excise and other taxes, $805,000 from licenses, permits, and fees, $71,694 on interest on taxes, I guess somebody was late paying, and then interest on investments, $12,107. For a grand total, revenues, again, within fiscal year 1617, was $21,316,000. Does that help you with your question?
Are we surplus or not?
Oh, real question. Are we surplus or are we deficit? Oh, okay. So it looks to me like the, and I believe by law, the town is required to pay small amounts of spending. But so the budgetary fund balance at the beginning of that fiscal year was $4,649,000, and the budgetary fund balance at the end of the year was $4,738,000, which would suggest to me that they actually increased their reserves by whatever it is, a hundred thousand dollars during that fiscal year. So it's a great question, because the other leg to all of this is the side. And at the very end of this, when we do the omnibus vote, that will balance the expenditures with the projected revenue. That's how you're going to answer that question. Is that enough for tonight? It's a very good question. So anything else under, where are we, sewer? Put a little feature there, okay? Any other questions? Line item total, $1,449,398. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Very unanimously. So the last page is EMS, and this is the newest of the enterprises, and I think I will say this correctly. Used to be primarily funded by various volunteer efforts and some tax money, but it was discovered a number of years ago that God was really leaving money on the table because most insurance, health insurance plans will pay for an ambulance call. And so this is a way of billing the health insurance providers for ambulance service and being able to bring those revenues in and use it to operate a fairly expensive enterprise, a vital enterprise. So the categories are salaries, operations, capital, and reserve, set up the same way as the other enterprises. Line item total, $660,793. And what's the finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends total EMS of $600,000. Finance committee recommends total EMS, $660,793.
Okay, any discussion on the EMS budget? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. Karen, did I hear a no? Okay, Karen unanimously. So you have one more motion, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so just a preview of what that is, because it really goes back to the previous question from the voters. This is really to balance the budget expenditures against revenues and available funds. Correct?
Yes. Details, we listed the expenditure for this detail. The finance committee recommends that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,681,910, and appropriate and transfer from free cash, $940,000, and appropriate and transfer from KMTV, the sum of $29,000, and appropriate and transfer from the sale of lots, $1,600, and appropriate and transfer from the recycle ramp, the sum of $2,000, and appropriate and transfer from overlay surplus, the sum of $50,000, and appropriate and transfer from sewer capital account, the sum of $40,000, and appropriate and transfer from sewer retained earnings, the sum of $151,000, and appropriate and transfer from water retained earnings, the sum of $544,854, for a grand total of $13,445,564, which represents a general fund budget in the amount of $9,660,519.
Okay. Is there a question on that motion that basically combines everything you've done over the last 35 or 40 minutes, balances expenditures with available revenues? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The end is after the $9,660,510, and the water fund budget of $1,674,854, and the sewer budget of $1,449,398, and the emergency services budget of $660,793.
All right. And I'm sure there's no questions about the additional wording there, but again, that step is combining all of this together and assuring a balanced budget between the expenditures and revenues. So unless somebody does have a question or a comment, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. Unanimously. So now I'm going to go back to the paper town warrant. Appreciate your cooperation and follow through and sticking to the particular categories. I understand lots of lots of numbers and different line items to go through, but we've got that accomplished. Next several articles have to do with revolving accounts. And again, this question comes up at various town meetings, well, how come we have revolving accounts out there? And they're basically where there's a user fee or some, you know, non-tax source of revenue that's coming into a particular department or function. You'll see all of these listed out. And so by town meeting vote, you enable whoever, whether it's the harbor master or somebody else who's administering one of these, to be able to take money out of that revolving account, up to a certain amount, and under certain conditions and certain under the supervision of the town accountant and the select board. So that's revolving accounts. Article 10 is to add two new ones, as I understand it. And so the first one will be a sidewalk revolving account. You can read across the line there, but it would be under the control of the DPW. And then the next, the next and last one would be the council on aging house numbering program revolving fund, fall under that group. And I understand that's a relatively new program that's been implemented in the last year or so. That's requested by the select board. Is there a finance committee recommendation on that?
None.
Okay, and a second? Motion made, seconded. Do you want to, the select board wishes to speak for the article? Okay. Any questions on Article 10, creating two new revolving accounts? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of Article 10 as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. Now Article 11 sets an annual spending limit authorization for the various accounts that are, have been set up. So you have the building inspectors revolving account, $40,000 limit on spending, a hazmat revolving account, $40,000 limit, boat ramp revolving account, $50,000, police chief lake revolving account, $20,000, local lake permitting revolving account, $40,000, custodial service fund, $5,000, council on aging revolving fund, $10,000, council on aging classes, $10,000, sidewalk, $80,000, and council on aging house numbering program, $10,000. That's requested by the select board. And is there a finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee recommends that the town vote to authorize Article 11 in the amount of $305,000 for the purpose of the inspectors revolving, hazmat revolving, boat ramp revolving, police chief lake revolving, local lake permitting revolving, custodial service fund revolving, COA revolving fund, and COA classes revolving fund, sidewalk revolving, and COA house number program revolving funds.
Okay. So open for discussion on Article 12, setting an annual limit on the various revolving funds, annual spending limit on the various revolving funds that have been offered. Any questions or comments there? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. Karen unanimously. I'm going to move on. I think there's several articles here having to do with the community preservation committee, different articles for different purposes. This is a program that was set up, I'm going to say 15 or so years ago, a number of years ago, basically under state enabling legislation, which oversimplified, allows the town to institute a surcharge on the real estate tax bills, put those funds into a separate account, if you will, controlled by the community preservation committee and this town meeting for various purposes having to do with land preservation, cultural, historical, low income housing, those types of things. You'll see that as we go through the budget. So that's what the, in a nutshell, community preservation is about. It is certainly part of the town, but it is outside of the budget that you passed a few moments ago. So Article 12, to act on the report of the community preservation committee on the fiscal year 2019, community preservation budget and to set up a budgeted reserve for later appropriation of monies from the community preservation fund annual revenues or available funds for the undertaking of community preservation projects and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B, from the estimated fiscal year 2019 Community Preservation Fund, appropriation to be set aside as follows. And that's going to be all itemized as you go down through page five as to how that's going to be reserved and what the, you know, total of the funds would be. And I left this out of my earlier explanation, but there is a state match for some of that funding, so it brings in some additional monies to that state fund. So with that, on Article 12, what's the finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee recommends that the town vote to authorize the community preservation reserves in the amount of $419,606.
Okay. Is there a representative of the CPC here who would like to comment or respond to questions, sir? If you would just identify yourself.
Hi, Christopher Pratt, one of the two virtue have vice chair of re-preservation.
Anything you want to say as an overview here, Chris?
I just want to make sure everybody understands that we do have to reserve 10% to go to open space, 10% to go to historical resources, 10% for community housing, and the rest we left is unreserved. That way we can use them for any of the above.
Okay.
So I allocate it that way.
Let's keep the microphone there, and are there any questions on Article 12? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. Karen unanimously. Moving on, page six. Now, community preservation committee administrative and operating expenses. To act on the report of the community preservation committee on the fiscal year 2019 budget and appropriate 5%, which is $15,268 of the monies from the community preservation general unreserved fund for the administrative and operating expenses of the committee or take any other action relative thereto, and I'll recognize the chair of the finance committee.
Finance committee recommends the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $15,268 from the community preservation general unreserved fund for the purpose of administration and operating expenses of the community preservation committee.
Okay. Any questions on Article 13, basically setting aside some of those monies for the operation of the committee? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of Article 13 as presented to you, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. I hear one no. I'm going to declare that a majority vote, and we'll move forward to Article 14, which has to do with an agricultural preservation restriction, and it reads, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate, transfer the sum of $44,500 from the fiscal year 2018 Community Preservation Open Space Fund for a 10% local match toward the purchase of an APR restriction of approximately 58.65 acres of farmland on North Long Yard Road. The APR is valued at $445,000. The state of Massachusetts APR program is paying $400,500. Project site Camden County Registry of Deeds Book 200207, or page 483, 488, and 495, formerly known as part of the Assessors map 69, parcel 9, map 47, parcel 2, and map 47, parcel 3, owned by North Long Yard LLC, recorded at the Camden County Registry of Deeds, or to take any other action relative thereto." And that's requested by the CPC committee. Finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $44,500 in accordance with the recommendation of the CPC.
Chris, I'll allow you to say anything you'd like in terms of explanation there, and then briefly recognize the representative of the Commonwealth Department of Agriculture to add any color she wishes.
I'd just like to endorse this program. I'm also chair of the Conservation Commission, and we love open space in town. This allows people to preserve their space as, their parks as open space and be left in perpetuity for that purpose. Barbara Hopson is here, and she can explain way more in depth than I can, so I'd like to turn that over.
And I don't see you in the room, but if you stand, then we'll get, yeah, if you would stand, then we'll get a microphone back there, and if you want, just give us a brief overview of the program, how the local match interacts with the state.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Hopson. I'm with the Department of Agricultural Resources, the agricultural preservation restriction program. As many of you know, we've worked for many, many years cooperatively with the town of Southwick on preserving numerous agricultural parcels. It's been a very successful program in town, and part of that is due to you folks and to step up to the plate and provide local funding, and you have consistently provided at least 10% of the purchase price. The Commonwealth does pick up 90% of the cost of the acquisition, so I'd be more than willing to answer any specific questions, but I did want to thank you for supporting the program over many years.
So any questions or comments on Article 14 having to do with the preservation of the farmland on North Long Yard Road, on the west side of the road there, beautiful piece of ground. They've just told a lot of it now over the last week. Any questions?
Who's Mason 46 Lakefront? Is this adjacent to North Farm?
No, this is North Long Yard, Bruce. Been away from North Farm. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor of Article 14 as presented to you, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. That's Karen unanimously. Article 15, again, from the community preservation committee, historical morehouse roof replacement. See if the town will vote to authorize the community preservation committee to transfer $25,000 from the historical fund to the Southwick Historical Society to replace the roof on the historical morehouse and to take any other action relative thereto. That's requested by the community preservation committee and finance committee recommendation.
Finance committee recommends that the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000 from the community preservation historic fund from the Southwick Historical Society to replace the roof on the restored new morehouse.
Okay. Chris, any comment on that one, or just take questions?
Lee Hamburgh is here.
Okay. Let's see if there's any questions. I think most everybody's familiar with the morehouse and where it is and its significance and so forth, but is there a question or a comment about the proposed expenditure transfer of funds to the historical society? Yes, sir?
David Chan, Southern Fair Drive. Just wondering if the morehouse is under private ownership or on the town market?
So representative of the historical society, do you want to respond as to, okay, Lee, go ahead. Who's the owner?
Ladies and gentlemen, Lee Hamburgh, 48 South Long Yard. I'm president of the South Historical Society. However, all of our programs are open to the public, and we never charge a dime for anyone to visit there in appointment or to come during our open hours, and we also offer free programs, probably four or five hundred different programs over the years, again, with this or no charge to the tenant.
But in terms of the question, Lee, am I correct that the title of the property is held by the Southwick Historical Society and not by the town or Southwick?
Correct.
That is the question. Any other question or comment on the morehouse project? Seeing none, I'll call a vote on Article 615. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say no. Unanimously. I'm going to move on to the regional school district budget, and then take a I'm going to move on to the regional school district budget and then take a pause. The meeting don't go away, but we have a recognition that we would like to make at that point, and then we will go on. Actually, we'll do Articles 16 and 17 and then take the pause. So Article 16, regional school district budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $11,076,993 for the Southwick-Tollent-Grandville Regional School District Assessment for fiscal year 2019, commencing July 1, 2018, and ending on June 30, 2019, or take any other action theron. That's requested by the regional school committee. And I recognize the Chair of the Finance Committee for the recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $11,076,993 for the Southwick-Tollent-Grandville School District Assessment for fiscal year 2019.
Is there a chair or school committee member or superintendent here that would like to say few words on behalf of the budget and then take questions? Okay, our superintendent, so, yeah, it'd be nice to get her a microphone, Julia.
First, I'd like to thank all our students who are here tonight helping out. It's nice to see you here after school hours and seeing effective government at work. I'd just like to share a few highlights to our-
If you would introduce yourself.
Superintendent, gentlemen. Just a few things I'd just like to share with you to our budget. We started off this year with about an $829,000 in fixed cost increases. So it wasn't looking promising when we started looking at the budget in November. After working closely with Steve Presnell, Director of Finance and Operations, we were able to realize some savings that we hadn't anticipated. One of them was about a 300 and over $300,000 saving in our vocational tuitions and another over $300,000 savings in our special ed out-of-district tuitions. So that was the two huge offsets to our budget this year. We also were able to get a 200,000, over $200,000 grant from the state for the infrastructure. So we were able to purchase and were going to be able to purchase end-user technology much sooner than we had anticipated, thanks to the $200,000 grant. We also received, Representative Boldiva worked tirelessly down in Boston, and he got us a $50,000 allocation for school safety. So with our school resource officer, we were able to use that money to offset some other costs we would be bringing forward to you. So those are the big things for our savings to offset. But the addition to our budget this year, we also had to increase our ELL services. And we also, with this technology, which is great and we're thrilled, comes some additional staff that we're going to need. So we had added in our budget a STEM coach, which is a person who will go in and work with our teachers on how to implement technology into the classroom and into instruction, and also a network administrator to help with any of the issues. And we all love technology, but we don't love technology when it doesn't work. So we are in need of another network administrator in the district. So we are coming to you today for a budget of $11,076,000. The majority of it is minimal local contribution and not discretionary charges. The discretionary charges that we're asking for this year are $115,000 out of the $11,000.
All right. So we're open for discussion. Question for Superintendent Willard or comment on the regional school assessment?
Joseph Mendes, 97 Foster Room.
Microphone a little closer, please.
Yeah, 97 Foster Room, Joseph Mendes. How many ELL students are there in the district? Just wondering.
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it was about 50, between 30 and 50.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any. So thank you, Superintendent Willard. And at this time, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 16, the regional school district appropriation in the amount of $11,076,993. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. Carried by a majority, I'm without counting hands, without the tellers arising, I'm just going to do a quick hand vote. All in favor of Article 16, please raise your hands. And those opposed to Article 16, please raise your hands. So I am going to declare a majority vote, noting that there are approximately 10 to 12 no votes, but a clear majority in favor of Article 16. Does anybody wish to contest my determination of the vote? Seeing none, we'll move on to Article 17, which is the debt authorization. And before I read this to you, every year, so I'm going to get up and say, well, there's a double negative in there in the risk. But I want to take the folks at the table behind you off the hook. You too, Carl. But this is written in Boston by, you know, by the folks down there. I'm sure there's some good rationale as to why they have it worded this way, and every town probably goes through the same discussion. But basically, on Article 17, and I'll read it in a moment, if you vote yes, you're, we're enabling the school region to go ahead and borrow money for various projects. If you were to vote no, then you would be saying no, we're not willing to authorize any of that. So at the end of the day, it's a pretty simple yes/no vote, but the wording's a little tricky. So it says as follows, Article 17, "To see if the Town of Southwick will vote not to disapprove certain additional debt authorized by the Southwick-Tollent-Grandville Regional School Committee under a vote dated April 3, 2008," which reads as follows, voted, "Approve authorization for incurred debt by the issuance and sale of bonds or notes for the amount of $600,000 for the purchase of all items specified by the school district's fiscal year 2019 capital improvement plan, or take any other action relative theron." And that's requested by the regional school district. Now, Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee recommends that the town vote not to disapprove Article 17 in the amount of $600,000.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 17? Okay. Somebody's raising their hand. Okay, in the back, if we can get the microphone over there. Yep.
Karen, do I have, I know, I have several-
Hold that microphone a little closer to you, please.
Karen, do I have, I know, I have several questions for Superintendent Willard. In the transportation, last year, we approved $200,000 for new buses, for smaller buses to get up into Granville. Now you're asking for $185,000. How many buses are we retiring? How many new ones are we purchasing? And is this $185,000 supported by actual quotes?
Yes, we purchased three mid-sized buses last year, and as we own our own bus fleet, we need to keep retiring some buses and purchasing new buses because they are an expense. So every year in the capital plan, you'll see about $200,000 out of the $600,000 to go towards new buses. This year, it will be designated for two large-sized buses.
Okay. And now in the grounds, $175,000. Last year, we approved $150,000, which included pavings, but it was Granville that had you cut it down to $75,000. And the paving that was specified was for woodland and for the bus garage. And now it's $175,000, which also is for, again, woodland and a bus garage. And we haven't seen any of the $75,000 worth of paving that we approved last year done yet.
That's correct, because last year, we only approved $525,000 to incur debt. It changed because you need three out of the three towers to evoke capital. Granville did not approve capital until October. We missed the window for paving. So the paving was the $75,000 that was cut out of the budget, and the other portion of the paving went towards additional technology.
Okay. So we approved $75,000 between the three towers for paving, but you chose to spend it on technology.
No.
Did it get voted on?
Did it get voted on and it changed funds? Yes, we sent it to the town officials.
Okay, so last year, I pointed out that even though here we approved what you present to us, you can actually go and spend that money how you feel appropriate within-
That's not accurate.
Okay, well, I know, I approved $75,000 to go for paving, and you just told me it was spent on technology.
The original budget that was presented was voted down, so then we have to go to the school committee, pass another budget. That was written up and sent to the three towers of what the new capital plan looked like. Again, Tollent and the Town of Southwick approved it. It did not pass in Granville. We then, the school committee, had to approve another capital plan that was sent to the town government. They approved it, and Granville approved the third one. They have the option to take the town home, again, bring you back for an annual town meeting, or they can choose to do nothing for 60 days, and it's automatically approved.
Karen, I'm going to ask you to wrap up here. Yes, if one-
I have one more question.
Okay.
What happened to the $100,000 that we approved for the playground last year?
Yes, so it didn't get approved until October, and we have a new supervisor building in grounds. We currently have an RFP out there for an engineering firm to come and look at the issues to mitigate the water drainage on the field. Again, we're in the middle of a sewer project, so we have that money. But again, we didn't know if there were going to be any unexpected costs with the sewer. So instead of getting into two large projects, we're wrapping up the sewer shortly, and the RFP is going out in a matter of days to engineer it first to start the playground project.
Okay, and I'd like to thank you for following the CPC's recommendation to find or look at alternatives besides sending $200,000.
That's what we did. Thank you.
All right. Other discussion on Article 17? Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote again. Yes allows the regional school committee to go ahead. A no vote would not allow them to go ahead. As opposed, all in favor of Article 17, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
Cast by a majority and, yes. So again, let's try this just by raising hands. Tell us if you can stay seated. Okay, Town Council tells me it's a majority, and I hear a strong majority saying approving of Article 17. I do note that there's 10 to 15 people voting no on Article 17. It would carry by a majority. Does anybody contest my finding of the vote on that? Seeing none. At this point, we're going to take a brief pause. We're going to continue in session here, but the board or the select board has a very important recognition that they would like to make before we get too late into the meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your indulgence. Chief Ricardi, could you please come up? Sergeant Banish, up some alone, up some side. Normally, as everyone's about in their car, we're handing out the awards for people that are leaving boards and committees, leaving the employee of the town, but the Board of Selectmen, like I noticed here, Dave, I don't know how to break it to you, but your size, I figure I have to. Chief David Ricardi is going to be retiring at the end of June, and we wanted to recognize his fantastic service in town. He's been here. Twelve beers, he says. He's recruited to come to Southwick by the late, great Chief Wolf, and has worked his way completely through the ranks with the Southwick Police Department from officer to sergeant, detective sergeant, lieutenant, and finally chief for the last six years. He's also been a member of the Regional Drug Task Force and notably Officer of the Year in Hammond County. I think David has done a fantastic job in working with the fine men and women of the Southwick Police Department and setting up this department for, to do a great service to the people of town and has positioned this department as we move forward. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the entire town, we wanted to recognize Chief David Ricardi and present you with this certificate of appreciation as an acknowledgement of our appreciation of your outstanding achievements and dedication to the Town of Southwick while serving as an officer, command officer, and chief of police for the last 30 years. Your dedication, experience, and leadership efforts to improve the department and the services it provides to the residents of the town are well-known and recognized. The town and its citizens have the highest regard for your service to the public. From Doug Moblen, Joe Viti, and Russell Clark.
Required hearings held in accordance with these articles. So stay tuned, and I'm sure there'll be some questions. So you have in front of you with Article 13, a marijuana zoning bylaw. And again, not going to read it in its entirety. I'm sure many of you here have followed the discussion and hearings and so forth on this matter. But basically, Section 185-35.2 deals with medical and recreational marijuana. Paragraph A, actions. Section C involves prohibited uses. And then over on page eight, permitted uses, permitted locations, general requirements, specific requirements, then issuance, transfer, discontinuance of use. Down at the bottom on I requires a bond. And all of that is requested by the planning board, as the gentleman has explained, has been through the extensive hearing process. And with that, I would ask for a motion to bring Article 18 up to the floor. And the second. And now, if you'd like to give us an overview, and then I'm sure there will be some questions and comments.
Sure. Just to hit the high points, this sets up an overlay districts in the Town of Southwick for various medical and recreational marijuana publication processes and retail. It requires a special permit for any sort of marijuana establishment that's being set up. Just to note, on the bottom of page seven, you'll see Section C. That is, question not been successful, but it was, so it will remain in that part of its recreational marijuana retailers in the Town of Southwick. Basically, the overlay districts, there's one for the medical dispensaries and the recreational establishments. That is basically in the industrial restricted and the industrial zones in the Town of Southwick. There's also an overlay district that is for the off-site marijuana dispensaries. The recreational dispensaries are not prohibited, are prohibited, the medical ones would be allowed. That is- That is various locations on Calhoun Highway. There's also, it's also allowed to have cultivation only in the agricultural as well as the residential zones if there's five acres or more. Finally, I think the other big point from this is that there's a few provisions in here as far as the location, that it's a fixed location and that there is no consumption on site in these various establishments. There's also bonds that could be in place, put in place by the planning board to allow for these sites to be shut down and things sold off. So, with that, any questions?
Good overview, someone. Now, open for discussion, questions or comments on anything on the two, a little more than two pages containing Article 18, the marijuana zoning bylaw. Okay, Bruce Mason, if we could get a microphone under there, please.
Bruce Mason, 46th and 1st Street. My reading of this is that there is, is it prohibits retail but allows production and growth of marijuana in town? Is that correct?
And that's for recreational, recreational, but...
And I'm guessing the answer is yes on that, is that correct? So everybody can follow the discussion. Other discussion on Article 18. Gentleman right here in the center.
Ryan Pease, 180th Ward, mining. I was the resident on the zoning board subcommittee that created this bylaw. Pretty good bylaw, really encompasses everything in the law, but just understand if you don't pass this, you will only have the state regulations for the town, so by saying no to this, you basically open up Southwick for cannabis anywhere. So, that's, if you guys don't want to have the bylaw, that's what would happen.
Okay, see other hands, so let's go around the corner here, let's get the first gentleman here in the blue shirt. Oh, green shirt, okay.
The Knickburg trap. Why are we, all these other towns are gonna have recreational marijuana, why are we gonna lose out on that tax money? Because I know that most of us that are gonna want it are just gonna go to the next town to buy it.
Okay. Move, you can move. Do you have a response or... No, it's not working. Just, if you speak up here, please.
So, it's not something that the planning board has come up with, this was, this was a product of the ballot question. The ballot question is what prohibits recreational marijuana retail. That's, that's something the planning board came up with.
So, let's move on to the lady in the mid, section there, yep, if you'd go back. Look, I wanna move it around, so we'll come back.
So, I think it's really important to bring up what, what you'd be allowing or not allowing in the town. I think we all just sat through an hour of unanimously moving through all of these things that are gonna be charged to our town budget, so I think it's really important to bring up, for those of you who don't know, what happens to tax money and tax revenue that comes from these retail locations. So, you can take your feet in all you want, it is legal, and it is going to be in our other communities, and 3% of the tax revenue from any retail for any of this is gonna go to local levies. So, it looks to me, from the numbers, that we could use some tax revenue. However you stand on it morally, Massachusetts, it is legal and it is coming, and it's gonna go to other towns. And just like bars, which our town has many, people have their favorites, they have places they like to go to, to purchase and to drink, and, you know, there, these laws, there's gonna be laws to protect people, there's going to be permits that need to be happening, there's going to be inspections that need to go through. So, if you're going to vote anyway, know that you're also voting down some serious tax revenue that it appears to me we need.
Okay, now the gentleman in the blue shirt down front.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dominic Ferretro, 133 Berkshire Avenue. I travel around the country, been to all the states that marijuana is legal. I found a town in southern Colorado that population is 8,482 people, although our town is just a hair bigger than that. Their tax sales revenue last year was $335,348 from legal sale of just recreational marijuana. Medical marijuana was $63,120. A total of $398,468 went to that town. There was four dispensaries in that town. In those four dispensaries, each one averaged about 25 employees for each one of those locations, like it's over $60,000 a year. And there's 100 jobs in this town if we pass this to open up these stores in this town. Also, in that, the medical and we here in this part of the country, wherever it is sold, is making sure that it's away from children, that it's a, that it's a good product, it isn't something that's gonna be based with something that people can find on the streets. There is a lot that goes on in the jobs and the money that this will drive, we are on the cutting edge of this. And this town can make a lot of money for being where we are. The careers, there's a school in Massachusetts, the New England School of Cannabis, that is now turning out 200 to 300 people per semester in this field. It is coming. It is time we jumped on this and get on with ourselves. We are a border town, we can make a lot of money here for this town. This town needs money.
I got some questions. Uh, no, I'm gonna, if you would yield the floor, who else wants to be recognized? Okay, let's, let's go back up into this corner, let's get the lady first who had her hand raised, then we'll go to the gentleman behind you, yes.
I don't even know her.
Name and street first, please.
Gina Patterson from Hunters Ridge. I'm a transplant from Hawaii, so I can speak to this topic very well. If you've ever seen long-term use of recreational marijuana, go to Hawaii, okay, because I just, not, not a big population of, you know what, I'm gonna not get on that subject, but here's the point I would want to make to the gentleman here. They said the same thing about smoking cigarettes not too long ago, and if you read any magazine or news article, it's just about increasing the age limit to smoking cigarettes. We have a painkiller epidemic right now, that's crazy. I don't understand the cause and effect of this argument here. When you're saying that weed is good recreationally, I don't, I just don't buy it when you're saying cigarettes are bad, but opioids are bad, and painkillers are bad, but recreational is good? Are you kidding me?
No, we're not... No, sir, we're not gonna have a debate one-on-one here. We're gonna give the people a chance. Gentlemen in the back.
Good evening, this is on...
Yes, it is.
Good evening, Pastor Dan Larry, Leamington Church, 267 Calhoun Highway. I just wanted to take a moment to address the issue that's been brought up here tonight. You know, I was thinking, is allowing recreational marijuana sales in Southwick, last week our town residents voted to bring this issue back to the town meeting to change the bylaws to prohibit sale of recreational marijuana in our town. I believe the bylaw change prohibiting the sale would best reflect the sentiment of vote from our residents. This is not to prohibit medicinal marijuana, that's a separate issue entirely, we're talking purely about recreational marijuana facilities. To those that would say that, you know, this is being approved by many towns and that's being, going around with other people who are accepting it, out of the 350 municipalities here in Massachusetts, 180 of them already voted to ban sales of those in their communities. So even though it is legal in Massachusetts, that is true, more and more communities are saying that they do not want it in their community. With fewer communities offering recreational marijuana sales, it means that if we do allow it, it means more people will come here to get. Now, you know, I think that that is a good thing, but currently, the only other towns and cities that offer it are Pitchfield and Northampton. So we see more people coming here to buy marijuana. The question must ask to ourselves is, is that what we want to be known for? Southwick is known for a lot of things, it's a farming community, a blue collar community, it's known for the lake, it's known for Mrs. Murphy's Donuts. I don't know if you want it to be known for that, that's probably up to you. One question that comes to mind is, if allowed, where would these businesses be? We've already mentioned that it's going to be farmed locally, and that brings its own sets of challenges for the police department, but the last time this issue was brought up, it was brought up, it was going to be put in the industrial park region, not too far from the libraries. So that's still close to our children, it's still close to our school areas. So we have to ask ourselves, not only where is it going to be located, but do other businesses want to be close to businesses that are offering this sort of thing? Finally, as was mentioned earlier, let us consider the irony that we're about to have a seminar about how to address the issue of opioid epidemic in our community, and yet we're sitting here looking to approve whether or not we should offer another recreational drug to people. Something that may pose addiction problems, and I'm sure that's available by some, but we're creating another problem as well. So I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of changing the bylaws to prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana in the town of Southwick.
If I could just say a couple things. One, there is a provision in here about the distance away from schools as well as the number of establishments that can be located near each other, so there's, there's distance requirements as related to those.
The bylaw creates not very far.
That's a law by the state.
Correct. Secondly, I think it's worth saying, I mean, this certainly is a hot button issue, and I'm sure people are gonna, some people are gonna vote on what they feel about and what they, you know, don't like about it, but to the extent that this is allowed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to the extent that we are sort of forced to deal with what is being presented here, the, the planning board created a subcommittee, and the subcommittee had a number of members on, some other boards, police chief, members of the community, and I think came up with a pretty reasonable bylaw. I can let Marcus Phelps, who is on it, the planning board, offer some brief comments of, maybe fill in a few more details as to the thinking behind some of these things, and that may help some folks here decide what they feel about the bylaw.
I will recognize Marcus, and then I'm gonna ask anybody who wants to speak on Article 18, who has not yet had an opportunity to do so, I'm gonna ask you to raise your hands, because I do want to enable, you know, widespread discussion and not confine it to, to a few people here. So, Marcus, and then we'll see who else wishes to speak to the issue.
Marcus Phelps, 28 Dupont Street. Yes, as Michael mentioned, we did have a subcommittee. We had myself, Michelle Ackerman, Doug Mowland, Chief Ricardi, Dr. Jerry Asia, Ryan Pease, and Dr. Donnie McGrath, who were on that committee. We met for eight months to come up with this bylaw. We started out with six pages and it's now down to a little over two. This bylaw is important because of two words, local control. The state does regulate this, I have to agree, that there are a lot of state regulations. We are combining this into both the medical and the recreational. For the medical bylaw, or medical use, the state has 52 pages of regulations. For the recreational marijuana, the state has 73 pages of regulations. But in my mind, these three pages are the most important, because this is what we want in Southwick. We've done the overlay districts, so it does limit it, we've done the distances away from schools and also between each establishment. So I think we've done the best we can to minimize the impact on the town of Southwick.
Okay, now, those who have not had, yet had an opportunity, I see a lady just to your left there, yep, go ahead.
Jean Smith from Hillside Road, 75 Hillside Road. I, I would ask, as a, I don't know if it's a point order or what, I have read and read and everything else, is there any point at which tonight I will be able to vote that yes, I want the overlay, I want the researches, but I also wish to reinforce my vote from the election last week, that that pertains to the medical marijuana, but I still do not want the recreational marijuana facilities? Will that arrive tonight and how?
If I get clarification from Doug Mowland, thank you for your question. As I understand the article as written, the article as written reflects the activity at the ballot box last week, which called for a prohibition of recreational marijuana retail in town of Southwick. So, under, on page seven, Section C says prohibited uses, non-medical marijuana retailers as defined in the general law shall be prohibited in the town of Southwick. So that, that language in the bylaw as it sits right now reflects the vote that was taken last week. So this would set up the zoning bylaw and the distances and so on and so forth, and the overlay district, and prohibit non-medical marijuana retailers as defined under the general law. May I answer your question? Are you satisfied with the answer or do you have a follow-up?
We have to vote on that or that is already in existence.
You need to vote on the, you need to pass this article this evening to, to affirm the vote that was taken last week. So, anybody else who has not yet spoken to the issue, I see you, sir, but lady over here, yep?
Jessica Ford in 352 Granville Road. I just wanted to reaffirm that I would not like to see this passed in the state of Massachusetts where recreational marijuana is coming, it's here, and to address the pastor's comments in regards to why it is not in our town, not with my kids, not near our schools, it's already here. How's it like we are doing tonight, or could be doing tonight? Which, I just want to add, I was at the last approval meeting for the planning board in regards to this bylaw that has been worked on for months. The selectman walked in towards the end of that meeting and said, oh, by the way, we're tossing this on the boat in May. So that whole 11% of the town that turned out last week, I don't think that's a big number to say that the majority of the town should lose that potential revenue and that small business owners should not be able to operate within their own town or search within their own town. I did not grow up in Southwick, I grew up in a square field, and town of Southwick was known for lots of things, like we said, Lake Congamunt, although at that time it was called Lake Congamuck. You are known for being a recreational community, my father picked tobacco in the fields here. We are, continue to be an agricultural and recreational community, but receiving the benefits of that. People are still growing pot in this town, they are still... They are still selling pot in this town. They are still gonna consume it. It's still out there. Why not, please, receive the benefit of it? We are a water town between Granville and Southwick, two very money-heavy towns. They're gonna go on 168 and 10202 to come into Massachusetts to buy marijuana that they can legally buy here. Now, they can continue on 10202 into Westfield and Northampton, or they could stop here and we could benefit. Tonight, we approved almost $1.2 million, excuse me, $12 million worth of fine items that would come from tax levies. Why should I want to pay that when we have the opportunity to get that tax revenue elsewhere? Also, the state laws, 52 plus 73 pages, that's a lot of pages already in the books. So if you feel like if we jump past this bylaw tonight, that we will be, it'll just be freefall, that's not true. We will still have to abide by the state laws, and hopefully this would give the marijuana planning board the opportunity to come back and to amend this. Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna go to the other one. I'm gonna go to the other one. Question 31, Andrew. A little question.
I'm gonna ask you to, I think there's several other people who have not yet been heard,
and I've been trying to deliberately get the microphone around here, so I'm going, I'm going to put that on hold for a few minutes. I saw two people up in this, in the middle section here. If you would, raise your hands, yes, neither of you have spoken yet tonight.
That's a form of order, Mr. Mowgli. Please move the question.
All right, okay, then, I have a motion to, you know, my advice is, this is a very, you know, this is a very important issue to everybody in the room, and there's a lot of good discussion going on here. I've been trying to control it. My suggestion is that it's a little early to move the question, but the gentleman's point is well taken. So I have a motion to move the question, which would cut off debate and vote to a vote, and so I need a second on that motion.
Second.
Okay, so, motion to move the question, and I wanna, I wanna be careful here, so I'm checking, and this would require a majority, what?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, and it's not debatable. So would take a two-thirds vote to move the question, to cut off debate. So you understand what you're doing. You're not voting on the bylaw. You're voting to cut off debate and move immediately to a vote. All in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
So I am going to call that a no vote, and we're gonna continue with discussion, and now to... I'm calling, I'm calling it a majority vote. Let's go to the two ladies up here, have their hands raised. They've been very patient with me. It needs to be a two-thirds, by the way, and that was not a two-thirds, so, if anything, it's high vote.
Well, Denise, I hear tomorrow, folks, when you have some drugs, don't give them the peer pressure. Don't hear, well, it's already in Southwick, it's coming your way, just roll over and let them do what they want. This is your chance, probably your last chance, to take control, and don't let it get any further than what it's going to do.
Neil DeHankin, 140 Summer Drive. Here's a lot of fog around this, so Mr. Mowgli, before the vote is taken on this bylaw, could you please clarify, a yes vote means this, a no vote means that? I think I hear a lot of confusion about what that is all about tonight, okay? So I will ask you to please do that before we go vote on this measure. I am on the fence on this, not on the medical marijuana issue, because I do believe that that has its place with cancer patients and people that are indeed in pain. The other part of this, the recreational part of this, does not sit well with me. If you've ever been on a grand jury, you will hear what people have laced this with. And whether or not you have a dispensary that's gonna be pure, that doesn't mean that it's not going to be resold, and it's not gonna be laced with something else, and it's not going to get more and more into kids' hands. It's just opening another door. We don't want, we have an integrity to uphold to our children, to uphold to our town, and also we have police officers that have to go out there and make a judgment whether these people are impaired or not. Right now, you can do a breathalyzer for alcohol. What do you do for marijuana? Catch out blood? So, you know, things are not truly enforceable, and that's all I'm gonna say on the matter. I am on the fence on this, but please clarify before we...
And I ask town council, before we take the vote, we will clarify, and that's a good request, you know, so. I see a hand back there, you've not spoken yet, am I correct? And so if we can get the microphone over there. With the Baycaps College sweatshirt, I can see that well from here.
Big letter. Gee, very talented, by the way, Southwick. I buy by these big stops every day, and I can tell you there's at least 10 underage cars in one of those, every night I buy by. I walk into these big stops, my own children have been in there, the drugs are being sold to them, they're getting them in the community. I agree, they smoke it, it's legal federally, it's not legal yet, Massachusetts is coming. I think, as a parent, an educator, a person in the community, I'll pay my taxes differently than put my resources on marijuana at this point. I think we need to look forward to the young people in our elementary school and our middle school who are caught with these rules and these big sticks, which are laced with, as women keep that in the annual, laced with things we don't know what they are. They're doing damage to our students, they're doing damage to our children going forward, and we're gonna pay for that in the long run. Now, I can get Narcan, and I can get all kinds of drugs, we got money, for free, but if I'm a cancer patient, that money doesn't come to me. So I don't think we should open this door way up to this next step. Ryan, I can very easily cross the fence. And, I don't know, I think as a parent and an educator and a person in the community, we can get our taxes somewhere else. Let's get legitimate businesses into our town.
Who else would like to speak through Article 18 that has not yet spoken? Okay, Terry Mish. Hold the microphone over there.
Terry Mish, 264 Granville Road. I'm just trying to get down to the brass tacks here, not pontificate on this. The question I have is, all right, last Tuesday, we voted yes meant no, no meant yes, and it was prohibited by a town ballot, okay, correct? Correct.
Just to clarify, if...
Well, with the microphone, let's clarify what the ballot...
Well, I just want to continue, let me finish it first, please. So what this bylaw does, and I was on the planning board for many years, this is a bylaw that gives local control to, that's been worked out, local control on where these places can be put, okay? So if we vote no on this this evening, does that, A, open it up to recreational marijuana available in the town? Okay, unregulated by this bylaw, because you voted no for it. I guess that's one of the big questions. And then if we vote, vote yes on this, somewhere down the line, would they be able to have another ballot a year from now, two years from now, five years from now, to bring this back up to legalize or allow recreational marijuana in our town? But I guess the main thing is, is that we vote no tonight, does that mean that we open this up to recreational marijuana? And then we, if we vote no, we also are just at the mercy of whatever the state standards are, whether they have anything to do with how many feet of park are the recreational marijuana facilities or stores?
I am gonna call that town council to, I believe there's at least two questions.
There might be more, but I think I've got it. So in response to your first comment about no means yes and yes means no, the ballot question that was on the warrant, or I'm sorry, that was at the election, is the length that's required by the statute. And I know it may have seemed confusing, but it's allowed, so a prohibition is the way that you back that out. So that's the way the statute and the legislature says that you have to word the question. Additionally, all that did was allow the town to have bylaws at this meeting to allow a ban of recreational marijuana. It did not ban it. The reason why we had to go that route is because at the prior election, the town voted to allow recreational marijuana. Had the town not done that, we would have been able to go to this process first. We wouldn't have had to go through the ballot if they initially voted not to allow recreational marijuana within the town. So that's the distinction that I want to just try to make clear, and I know it seems kind of confusing, and the legislature did not make it any easier for any of us. With regard to what this particular warrant article is, is it is a zoning regulation that pertains to not only recreational marijuana, but also medical marijuana. There is a provision in this article that bans recreational, I'm sorry, non-medical retail in this bylaw. So if you vote yes, you are voting to enact a bylaw that regulates medical marijuana facilities, cultivation facilities, and other facilities other than retailers, about where they can be placed in town, and the planning board and the subcommittee did a lot of work with this, they've done a great job. It also prohibits medical retailers. So that's, I'm sorry, recreational retail, sorry. In regard to, I was moving there. In regard to whether or not we would need another ballot in the future to change this, we would not. You can, once you have a bylaw in place, the way to change it is to amend the bylaw. So you could, at a future meeting, attempt to amend this bylaw or any of the other bylaws that are passed, and you do not need to go back and have another ballot question. Does that answer the two questions that you had?
So then the third question, I think, is, so if this bylaw is voted down as a no to the...
Correct.
...fails in passage, what are the implications of that?
Then there is absolutely no regulation of either medical or recreational marijuana within the town, and you default to the state statute.
Okay, so I'm still trying to make sure that I've covered all of the people who have not yet had the opportunity. So I think I have, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Mowgli and then Mr. Pease. He's been very patient with me, so go ahead.
Doug Mowgli, five minute place. I was also the select ward delegate to the marijuana subcommittee, and I do want to correct one factual point was, this issue about the ballot initiative was not a surprise to that subcommittee. It had been broadcast to the subcommittee previous, and I had come back to the subcommittee to report that the select ward had voted to put the issue to the vote. And we did it for a simple reason, and I think you see the answer. The town voted for, at the statewide level and locally, for medicinal marijuana by a fairly narrow margin. They voted for recreational marijuana by a fairly narrow margin in the grand scheme of things. What we hadn't asked was, do you want, so you want recreational marijuana, you want medicinal marijuana, do you want marijuana retail in town of Southwick? That was the question that went in front of the voters last Tuesday. The answer was clear. They voted for a prohibition of marijuana retail sales in the town of Southwick. So that's where we are today. And that's what this bylaw, with the work of the marijuana subcommittee, the planning board, set forth and brought to the planning board through the public hearing process and now to the town meeting, okay? At a future meeting, could this issue be revisited, to the attorney's point and to Jim's point? Absolutely. Okay? But this reflects, the bylaw as it's written today, should, I'm in favor of it, as it's written, it reflects the rule of the voters at the town level and respects the votes that were previously taken, respects the vote that was taken last week, and respects the work that was done by the subcommittee to put those local controls that in some cases are more restricted than the state law, as we feel that are necessary in the town of Southwick. A no vote on this bylaw removes those restrictions and puts it at whatever the state regulations are, and those state regulations are subject to change as well. Thank you.
All right, now, Mr. Pease.
Ryan Pease, 180 Warren, Biden. Again, I was on the subcommittee. The majority of the bylaw was really a lot of input from residents that came to the meeting. Predominantly, no one came to say any negative thing about our bylaw. We had one person that was concerned about some funding, and that's how a bond got put on there. There was a tremendous input from the community. You know, we'd really like to see this passed, but you also have to think, too, Westfield and Agawam currently have dispensaries in the process of opening. There will be delivery available at some point in the near future in Massachusetts. If someone orders their pot in Southwick from one of those other towns, it's delivered to Southwick, it's gonna come in a car, they're gonna deliver it to their house, that community is gonna receive the tax. Also, if you don't have the entities in place to protect the community, to enforce this aid laws, you are gonna definitely see marijuana, you know, getting into the wrong hands. But with these establishments following the stringent state guidelines, where they'll use their license that can cost tens of thousands of dollars, you're not gonna see people allowing underage people to purchase marijuana. It's not gonna happen. Somebody's not gonna risk their two, three, four thousand dollar business. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, and now, have you had enough to hear you speak? I don't think so. So let's get the microphone to this lady in the back, and then I am going to ask, oh, yeah, and then I am going to suggest that we move to a vote on this, and we'll see how well I've been listening, if I can summarize what we've been talking about.
My name is Andrea Humpy, 77 Tammany Road. I'm just curious, among the studies that we do, are there any perceived ancillary costs to the community for medical marijuana and for agricultural marijuana? Are we going to have higher costs for having those in our town that we leave the tax revenue?
Chairman of the planning board, any comment on that, or any, Mr. Phelps? The question is ancillary costs that come with the, with the other provisions here, if you will.
Yes, there could very well be, but part of the state regulation requires that there be a host-community agreement. And that's an agreement between the company or the establishment that's coming into town and the town officials. So that has to be negotiated, and if there's money available, that would come out of that host agreement, as is done under the state regulation.
All right, if there's no, okay, sir...
Hello, it's Ricky Patterson, I'm just a rich circle. Just to make myself comfortable in voting, a yes vote means that recreational marijuana is prohibited, you dealt with the city, is that correct? Yes?
Yes. Yes.
And it also means that in medical dispensaries will be regulated, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, chairman over here, and then we are going to, I am going to, yep.
Justin Lennies, 97, just a procedural question. So I see in Article 20, it's about the recreational dispensaries. What will happen if that article fails and this article passes? Will section C be moved or what?
Did you understand the question? I did not.
Okay, the question is, I understand that is, if Article 18 passes, what is the implication, or doesn't pass, what is the implication of that on Article 20, having to do with recreational marijuana? Did I get that if I'm right?
Yes.
So, this bylaw as it stands now, and I'm talking about Article 18, if this particular bylaw does not pass as it is now, there is absolutely no zoning with regard, no zoning regulation with regard to either medical or recreational marijuana dispensaries within the town. So, and this requires a two-thirds vote, so there will be no zoning. However, you go to a general bylaw, which would still be a prohibition for recreational, which only requires a majority vote, and that would stand, so that would be in effect. It would lose all the zoning protection that Article 18 carries with it.
So if, so if Article 20 fails and Article 18 passes, what is the effect?
I still believe that there will be a prohibition for non-medical retailers in the zoning bylaw, and it would not be, it would not be in allowed use within the town.
Thank you.
Okay, I am going to call the vote now, it requires a two-thirds vote, and I am going to try to summarize one more time, and I'm going to ask an attorney, Foyle, and the chair of the planning board or his delegate to correct me if I say anything incorrectly. My understanding, Leola, of Article 18 is that it would, you know, on top of what the state has already issued in terms of, you know, regulation on both medical and recreational marijuana, this would establish some local Town of Southway jurisdiction and rules in several different ways. So, my understanding of Article 18 is it would allow folks who are duly licensed to have more than a five acre parcel zone for farming, to produce marijuana for whatever purpose, is that correct? Yeah? Produce?
Commercial growers, correct.
Commercial growers, five acres and more. In terms of medical marijuana, it would provide, there could be dispensaries in town, but there would eventually, and I think we're coming to it in a future article, but only in certain regulated zones within the town, so not anywhere in town. It would be very carefully regulated, would have to go in front of the planning board for their approval. Am I correct on that?
I believe, yes.
As it stands, as it stands, as a result of the vote last week, and with section C of Article 18, the sale of recreational marijuana would be prohibited in the Town of Southway under any, you know, there's no further regulation, it's prohibited, is that correct? Correct? Okay. So that's my best of a summary. It requires a two-thirds vote, if the tellers would rise, I have no doubt that they'll need to count this under equivalent. So all in favor of Article 18, please raise your hands and keep them there. Paul, you ready?
Thirty.
Thirty, yes, on the stage and in the left section. And Diane?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five in the center. And Mike on the right?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. Those opposed to Article 18, please raise your hands and keep them there. Paul, what do you got?
Twelve.
Twelve on the left and stage. And center?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five in the center. And on the right, Mike, ten, thank you. So we have a vote of 113, yes, 45, no, and I'll let the folks with calculators figure that one out. Forty-seven? Yeah, I'm sorry, forty-seven. So, Article 18 passes. The tally is 113, yes, 47, no, for a total of 160. And the folks with the calculator tell me that a 107 or more is necessary for a two-thirds vote. So again, Article 18 passes, we move on to Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map for the Town of Southway to include the registered medical and recreational marijuana district and the off-site marijuana dispensary district as overlay districts located as shown on a map, on file with the town clerk of the Town of Southway, identified as the marijuana district's overlay dated December 19, 2017, or take any other action relative thereto that's requested by the planning board. Do I have a motion?
No.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, sir, would you like to describe what's going on with Article 19?
So Article 19 is really, plays off Article 18, this is simply somewhat administrative to change the zoning map for the Town of Southway to include those overlay districts that were approved in Article 18.
Okay, open for discussion under Article 19. Basically follows Article 18 in terms of implementation. Yes. Any further discussion on Article 19? Okay, question back here.
Mike, the wording says medical and recreational, so that would now just be assuming medical?
No, it just would not include recreational retailers. There's various different things, there's cultivation, there's processing.
Hold the microphone a little closer to your camera. So Mike's going to respond to that as to why the recreational stays in.
So if you look at the Article 18, you can see in some of the sections of it, there's a lot of different things that are involved in this. There's cultivation, there's human processing, there's distribution, there's testing, there's researching, and dispensing. There's a lot of different aspects to marijuana establishment in this practice of the town. And with regard to the overlay district that talks about recreational and medical, the one thing that is prohibited by Article 18, by that zoning bylaw, is going to be the non-medical marijuana retail. That's the only thing that is prohibited.
So recreational retail is the only thing prohibited?
Correct.
So you can have recreational wholesale? So why don't you just say that?
Okay, let's move on, other discussion on Article 19. Seeing, okay, Lee David, so if we can get a microphone over on this side of the room now. Lee Hamper, 48, South Longyear. I would just like to see a copy of the map, to see where this overlay district is. All right, I assume that the historical society is in the overlay district. Maybe we can get money. Other discussion on Article 18. Seeing none, I'm going to call the vote, it requires a two-thirds vote again, it is a zoning bylaw. All in favor of Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I am going to call for a vote on that, so if the tellers were, first of all, let's, those in favor of Article 19, just raise your hands. And those opposed to Article 19, raise your hands. So I see one, two, three, was there a hand back there? Anybody over in this section? Anybody back in there? So I see four people in the room voting no. Does anybody dispute my finding that that's a two-thirds majority in favor of Article 19? Everybody good with that determination?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll move on to Article 20, and this is a general bylaw, and again, I think it's been discussed somewhat prior to now, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Southway to add a new chapter 63, section 63-1, non-medical marijuana establishment as follows, and further, that non-substantive changes to the lettering and number of the code of the Town of Southway be authorized to be consistent with the code of the Town of Southway. And so it states what the new chapter 63 would say, non-medical marijuana retailers, as defined in, I assume that's Massachusetts general laws, chapter 94G, section 1, shall be prohibited with the Town of South, within the Town of Southway, or take any other action relative thereto. And that's requested by the select board. Do I have your motion? And a second?
No.
Motion made and seconded. The select board was opposed, do you wish to say anything? Okay. So any discussion on Article 20? Okay, Lady in the paint back here, would you get a microphone back there, please?
Jean Smith, 75, Woodside Road. Again, I'm just looking for clarification. This looks as though it's now saying what those in recreational marijuana can do. I'm confused again. Non-medical to me means recreational.
Yes.
And it seems to be saying that now we're going to tell them what they can do, but we just said they can't be here.
One of you answer it with a microphone, please.
This is a general bylaw, the other bylaw that you just passed was a zoning bylaw, they're both doing the same thing.
I think the question is, the term non-medical and recreational are the same term, is that correct?
There's a nuance, yes.
And that, I think that was your question, wasn't it ma'am?
What I'm confused by, Article 20 seems to contradict what I just voted in 18.
No, it says the same thing.
So what would a yes mean on this?
A yes means a prohibition to recreational marijuana retailers.
That's what Article 20 says?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? Saying no, hands. This one requires a majority vote, no two-thirds on this one. So Article 20, as read to you, and the specific language is, before you, all in favor, please say aye, okay? Take one question here at a time, and then we are going to take the vote.
General DeBae, 30, Airport Drive. And my question is, does Article 20 need to be here and accepted if it's redundant from 18?
Yes, it does.
So if we vote yes to Article 20, we have another bylaw that's in conjunction with the Article 18.
Is it possible to amend?
Shouldn't this event an amendment for Article 18?
Without getting into legal matters here, we're talking about two different sets of bylaws. We have, the town has a set of bylaws under which it operates, basically its constitution, and governs a lot of different things, how the town meeting is operated, what the boards are, and that type of thing. And that's what this is, that's a general bylaw. It also has a separate set of zoning bylaws, which are operated by the planning board, appeals board, has some role there, and they're two different, if you will, codes, is that correct?
Yes.
And so I think what the intent here is to put it into both codes.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we are going to call the vote. Article 20, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, all in favor of Article 20, please raise your hands. Those opposed to Article 20, please raise your hands. And my reading from up here is that that's a strong majority in favor of Article 20. Would anybody like to request a counting vote?
No.
No.
I see no appetite for that. So I am going to declare that a majority vote, clearly, there were many more hands raised for yes than for no. Article 21, marijuana tax, to see if the Town of Southway will vote to accept the general laws, chapter 64N, section 3, to authorize the town to impose a local excise tax on retail sales of marijuana for adult use at the rate of 3% or take any other action relative thereto, and that's requested by the select board. Okay, so I have read Article 21 to you, and first I'm going to take a motion to bring it onto the floor. And a second.
A second.
Okay, now I have a motion to take no action. Is there a second?
A second.
So what I'm going to ask you to vote on is simply Article 21, vote to take no action. All in favor of taking no action, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. And those opposed, say no. I hear a strong majority for take no action. I do know two or three people that voted no. So we're going to move ahead, away from marijuana, and to personal watercraft operations on North Pond. And I'm not going to read the entire Article to you. We are going to entertain an amendment shortly to the article. And so, you know, personal watercraft is defined there in Section 8. I understand those of you who are leaving, the remainder of us, we have a meeting here. So I ask you to vote quietly and not having conversations outside, please. So we're basically proposing a by law here, having to do with the use of personal watercraft on North Pond. And Section A, which nine defines those vehicles, I guess. The second, B, kind of talks about what they're used for. C defines headway speed. And then 75-13A defines enforcement. And B provides a penalty or take any other action relative thereto, requested by the chief of police and the select board. Do I have a motion? And a second. Motion made and seconded. So that puts it on the floor. At this time, where's Paul Murphy or, I guess, Ken Plumley? Okay, see the two gentlemen. So Ken's going to make the amendment, and I believe Paul's going to second it.
Mr. Moderator, I ask the point of order. My name is Ken Plumley, I live in 16 Vanwood. I would like to make a motion to amend Section 75-12, of a proposed by law, to read as follows. Section 75-12, operation of personal watercraft is prohibited on North Pond. Paragraph B. The use of a powered craft, generally known as a jet ski, surf jet, wet bike, or otherwise described as a personal watercraft, shall not be allowed to operate on the body of water known as North Pond. And under the same motion, I would ask that paragraph C be removed from Section 75-12, as no longer is applicable.
Okay, so let me repeat. First, why don't you go ahead and second Paul? Okay. So, and I have this in front of me. So my understanding of the amendment is that you're striking 75-12B in its entirety and replacing it with this new language.
Yes.
And you are striking 75-12C in its entirety, and there will no longer be a C.
Yes.
And is that the amendment? Okay. And, oh, okay, and are you changing the title of the by law?
Yeah.
Yes.
So let me make my ruling first. The gentleman called me over the weekend, I appreciate that because it's easier to think these things through, you have to have a day or two, than to deal with, you know, spur of the moment here at the town meeting. But the issue that I have to rule on is whether the amendment is within the scope of the original article, or whether it so changes the original article that it becomes, in effect, a brand-new article that really wasn't properly informed to the voters in advance. And in this case, I'm going to rule that it is a proper amendment. You know, a couple of different parts of my thought processes. My understanding is that in the past, the personal, what do we call them? The personal watercraft have been prohibited on North Pond. So it's kind of a, that's been the status quo up until recently. And I suspect some people would, would say that, well, operating at head speed versus a prohibition is not a big difference in the two. You're not going to have a lot of fun on jet skiing, operating at head speed. So I think it is legitimate for it to come before the town meeting for reconsideration the amendment is. So this is how the process works. I will give Michelle my copy, so you could. So this is the process. Watch, I'll recognize you in a moment. So we're now going to debate the amendment, okay? And so the amendment that the gentleman had just presented, which does change the outcome here from, you know, a, a regulation of the use of these craft to a prohibition of these craft on North Pond. So we're going to discuss the, you know, the merits and your views and questions and comments on, on the amendment. We will then take a vote on the amendment. Requires a majority to adopt the amendment. If the amendment is adopted, then we go back and we discuss Article 22 as amended. And then we take, have more discussion if necessary, and we'll take a vote on that. If the amendment fails, does not get a majority vote, then we go back and discuss Article 22 as presented. We'll go back through that again as we, as we move along. So first, does either of the gentlemen who presented this wish to lay out a rationale, and then Roger, I will recognize you. But, you know, what you're trying to accomplish and perhaps who you're representing and so forth?
Yes, thank you. I live on North Pond.
Put that microphone a little closer there, Ken.
I live on North Pond. I don't think there's anyone who can deny that North Pond is a small pond. It's 47 acres. We already have, actually, a longstanding state law that prohibits jet skis on the pond that is less than 75 acres. Jet skis come on the pond and actually buzz fishing boats and drive them off the pond. They have no regard for canoes, kayaks, or for that matter, anyone else. Please for common sense and prohibit jet skis on North Pond.
Okay, thank you, sir. And now Roger Cattalo, if you would pass the microphone back. I think you just shut it off.
My name is Roger Cattalo. I was on the police department for 32 years here in town. 20 years of it, I did boat patrol. In 1986, we got our first boat. We were trained by the environmental police to know the rules and regulations. At that time, jet skis were allowed on the, on North Pond. North Pond and Middle Pond and South Pond are still considered one lake.
That's right.
It's not three separate lakes. That's where, even though the North Pond is a smaller part of the lake, they're not. Another thing, too, is when a citation was issued to it, not in the 70s, well, in the 80s and 90s, there wasn't a citation issued sometime later in the 90s. It was also the court officer for the town of Southwood. When we went to, before a judge, the judge took it into consideration and dismissed it because they considered it unlawful to issue the ticket for a jet ski on North Pond. So the issue of under 75 acres, yes, the lake is under 75 acres. But the by law, another thing, is the speed, and it's state regulation, is 45 miles an hour for all here in New York. Watercraft, I have votes, so I get them. So the issue is, you're changing the law contrary to what state law is. State law has that you can be on the lake with a jet ski on North Pond or any part of the lake.
Okay, I'm going to recognize the chief of police, and then Mr. Beulah back here, and, and those who wish to speak will, will get around to raise hands. Chief Recardi.
Thank you. I guess you could say I started this based on a question or complaint from a citizen. As a chief, I needed to be fair and impartial, so I did some research on his request. And that was, he lives on North Pond, he wanted to take his jet ski, all right, from North Pond to Middle Pond, okay? That's all he wanted, all right? And I took it from there. In my research, I found a few things out. First, what is that? The state will not give you a written decision, but they consider, Concomode Lake, 477 acres, which negates that 75 acre rule that everybody's trying to make as a standard here. It's not 75 acres, all right? We're dealing with 477 acres here. Yeah, it's 47 acres. So you've got to keep that in mind. If you take a step farther and you go to the Department of Wildlife and Fisheries, read what they say about Lake Noddy. It's 477 acres with three basins, all right? So we're still back to 477 acres. Myself and Chairman Bowlin, along with a few others in this room, went to a meeting with the environmental police in Indian Orchard. And we were basically left there, and we were kind of told, go back to your local government, see what you can do. What they were saying was, if you want to prohibit the use of jet skis on North Pond, then the only way it's going to be done is through a by law. All right? Nobody wanted to do anything about a by law because they felt that they had the state law, which they believed they were interpreting correctly, to fall back on. So the selectmen met with myself, and I agreed to come up with a fair and impartial by law. The by law that I came up with says headway speed of six miles an hour. That allows people that live on that lake to get off the lake and go to the big lake in the middle, where they can really operate. Because to me, nobody really wants to be out on that small pond anyway. And the other part is, you know, we've got other issues, you know, you talk about the lake, and I just wanted to deal with the jet skis. What about the water skiers and the tubers? And, you know, all I want to do is have something that's fair for everybody. And that's why I did what I did.
Okay, now Richard Beulah, and a good couple of hands back. So Richard Beulah, and I've got a couple of hands over here, so if we can get a microphone over on this side here. So Richard first.
Question seems to be, everyone doesn't want to speak. Well, there are several, to my knowledge, several no-wake zones in the Middle Pond, Vol. 27, etc. So when I first read this, my initial thought was, well, make the entire North Pond a no-wake zone and apply it to everything, all power vessels, jet skis, and outlets. It solves the problem. You can have your no-wake, and you're not singling out, you're not singling out jet skis. We're just really hitting this.
Okay, I think the lady in, you know, with the rust-colored sweater first, and then Bruce behind her, and then we'll come back around on this slide. I'm not overlooking it. There's about one second delay, so be patient. Try now.
I'm patient. Joan Purpin Smith, North Pond, Lake U Street. I spoke at a meeting that was held, and the chief of police and some other people were there at the headboard. And what I spoke about was, the state obviously felt a need to set a restriction on a lake less than 75 acres. Probably for safety reasons, I'm guessing. To follow the letter of the law, North Pond is part of a larger body of water, and therefore doesn't qualify for that stipulation. But to follow the intent of the law, which is, a lake that is that small cannot support the disruption of a jet ski. So rather than go to the letter of the law, we should go to the intent of the law, which is to prohibit those vehicles on such a small body of water, even though it is connected by a small thread to the larger part of the lake. Thank you.
And if you could have the microphone back on the left side of the Rome here town. We've got several people over there. We're going to do Bruce first.
Bruce Mason, 46 Lake Monster. I also happen to be the federal commander for the Coast Guard Auxiliary Unit that covers North Hampton and Weston. The jet skis are no worse nor no better than any other kind of powered motorboat on, on the Concomode. I grew up, I lived on property within 200 feet of the water. When we were, when we first moved to Southwood, they used to do powered boats, water ski turns in the middle of what they call Lily Pond, between the mouth of Middle Pond and the mouth of North Pond. And, you know, and that was, and it took a lot of work with the, with the boat, colors of D at the time, to get people to stop doing that. And there were a lot of people that were hit. I think the Savage Boy, the Red Boy, all carried scars from what, from the propeller blade where they were hit by people who went through there without any regard to speed. As far as making Lily Pond or North Pond a no-wake zone, they, I think, one of the things that they put, they did mention on the sheet is that, you know, it's not supposed to be going, operated more than six miles per hour with 100 feet, 150 feet of shore or swimming area. You can't get 150 feet from, from the shore in that area, right? So, so all things considered, I would recommend that the only way the town can operate is to, is to do what Chief Recardi has asked, and to make it a no-wake zone, and to put a six mile per hour limit through there. limit through there. I can't see any other way to make it for the town to make it a no-wake zone.
All right, thanks, Bruce. So, we're going to come around the corner here, we're going to do Bruce, and then the gentleman on this side, so Dick Reynolds, yeah? I don't know what I called you, Dick, but I think I said gentleman.
Dick Reynolds, one forty-eight, we're chair, chair of the Lake Management Committee for the last almost thirty years. Lake Management Committee has had discussions about this endlessly, discussions about this subject. And each time, we have voted unanimously to continue the prohibition that has been in place for a couple of decades, was enforced. I've spoken with three retired environmental police officers, two of our boat officers, and, by the way, both the police officer who gave that information and the environmental police is no longer with the environmental police. So, at any rate, we, from a safety standpoint, there is a half a mile between the southern end of the fishing pier to where the lake fans out in North Pond. It's all no-wake zone now. And that's because of the hundred fifty-foot rule, it's a requirement, and it's duly posted with navigation buoys all the way through that area. In addition, it's a hundred-foot-long tunnel that is only twelve feet wide. You can only fit one boat through it at a time. You can't go through parallel. It's not two-way traffic, it's one-way traffic. Unfortunately, jet skis might be able to squeeze through and hit each other on the way through because they're a little bit narrower than a boat. But if you've ever been out there on a Saturday or Sunday, it's a pretty good way, and there's a lot of jockeying to make your way through that tunnel. It's already problematic for more than, you've got a hundred-foot tunnel, two hundred feet on the north side, and another hundred fifty or so feet on the south side, where you can only just jockey and look, try and get your line of sight through the tunnel. There's a blind entrance. We don't have any choice with that. It's the way the lakes are laid out. We didn't re-lay out the lakes to put a tunnel in there. It used to be a seven-foot tunnel, now it's a twelve-foot-wide tunnel. So, they were enforced all that time, suddenly, we have decided to not enforce it, and we have created now a safety problem because jet skis inherently, not stand-up ones, have no reverse at all. Most jet, personal watercraft do not have reverse, only the newest ones, the newer ones. So when you're trying to jockey in that narrow area to vie for space to get through the tunnel, what do you do? You start bumping into one another. And you've got these, you've got ones that are trying, each one's trying to get south, others are trying to get north. Also, Chapter one thirty-one, Section forty-six, has still not been resolved. That's how you measure an appendage to a pond. And it says fifty feet wide is, it has to be one fifty feet wide to consider it a continuous body of water. That really hasn't been resolved in the state. Haven't given an answer yes or no. So rather than rush into this, if we're not going to vote to prohibit them, then we should at least vote to table it and wait until people can do some more research on it.
Okay, I am going to, just to keep everybody on mission here, we're discussing the amendment right now, which is a amendment to prohibit, basically. So let's go to Paul Murphy here, and then we will work our way back on that aisle. I see some other hands, ladies.
Hi, my name is Paul Murphy. I've lived in town thirty-six years. I live at eighty point Grove Road. I'm a retired Aguam police officer, okay? I've been very studious on this matter. As far as the three lakes as one goes, the connection made between Middle Pond and North Pond is a man-made connection. It's a man-made culvert. You'd be very hard-pressed to win in court to say that this is one body of water, okay? Roger knows, he was a police officer here, every ticket that you write is contestable. When you go to court, you check the box, you get a hearing. These offenses are actually criminal. They are arrestable. That means you don't check the box. You have a court date with the judge. Okay, moving along, the chief must be able to, summer residents are a little more important than the people who live here all year long. Because, point honestly, eighty-five percent of us, signed petitions, say we aren't, we're opposed to this, okay? Many of the people are here tonight, okay? The state wants us to make a decision. That's what we're doing tonight.
Okay, I am going to suggest, because I see a lot of hands, and we'll try to get, and if my student would walk back about halfway up the aisle, we'll find somebody else, but, okay, the gentleman that's standing up, yeah. Hang on a second, though. In terms of the state interpretation as to whether the lakes are one body of water or three, let's, I know there's been a lot of discussion already on that, and it's an unresolved issue, it's a, you know, an issue of interpretation. Let's leave that alone. I think it's well-established here that that's an open question. I think the intent of both the original bylaw and now the amendment is to basically bypass that issue and deal with it here locally, and then whatever the state decides later on, that's up to the state. So let's not keep bringing that back. So, sir, go ahead.
Bruce Stewart, thirty-nine Lakeview Street. I live on North Pond, and actually, it doesn't make any difference, it's seventy-five versus forty-two or whatever. The regulation itself was a matter of safety. And what they were saying was that jet skis should not operate on smaller bodies of water. It's a matter of safety. Anybody who takes a trip to North Pond, takes one look out there, is bound to say, "Jet skis do not belong on this body of water." If they are allowed on that body of water, I guarantee you that there will be serious injury and/or death. There is no question about that. So that if they're allowed on North Pond, you are voting for that sort of thing to happen. As far as legalities go, municipalities have the right to pass town bylaws or regulations that are more strict than the state regulations, so that we absolutely have a right to do this tonight. And, you know, as a matter of safety, as a matter of humanity, they just do not allow them as well.
Okay, who else has not spoken to the issue? The lady up here with the black sweater, she's going to go way up in the center section.
Okay, Nora Beaker, twenty-seven Eagle Street. I also live on North Pond. We've only been residents here a couple of years. I agree with a lot of things. I'm not against jet skis. The issue is, comes down to safety, but a larger issue is the fact that the bylaw, as presented earlier, is not really enforceable. Nothing against the police department, they're only out there on Saturdays and Sundays. We have an issue with the jet skis during the middle of the week. Now that school's closing, we're going to have a lot more boaters out there. The kids are jumping off the pontoon boats in the middle of the lake. Some of them don't have life preservers on, they're not on floats or anything like that, they're out there swimming. Jet skis, they're out there until later at night. You don't see most of the boats leaving until after dusk. Jet skis going out there, they're out there now, they're not going headway, headway speed. They're out bombing around the lake in the middle of the week. We have videos of them just screaming and yelling and saying, you know, "We can do this now, it's okay." But they're not taking any precautions, whether they're fishing boats, whether they're kids in the water, whether they're kayaks or paddleboards. More of it is about the enforcement. Again, the police are not going to be out there Monday through Friday. Something will happen during that time. If it doesn't happen on the weekend, they might be able to control it on the weekend, but definitely not during the week.
Okay, there's another person in the row back there. Where's my row back? She was taken to the back row.
My name is Rich Grafflin, twenty-four Vechton Street. I'm also on North Pond. I live right in the channel, right on the channel, so I see what goes on there. I see the boats pack up on Sundays, I see the boats pack up, and I also have seen, since June of last year, jet skis have been allowed on the North Basin. This is a police report of everything that happened last summer, the entire summer since jet skis have been allowed. There isn't one, that's one incident against the jet ski on the North Basin, nothing. The only thing that was stipulated about jet skis on the North Basin is that someone called the police station and said, "Oh my God, there's a jet ski on the North Basin." That was the only incident on the entire summer where they were allowed, all summer. As far as safety goes, they're considering safety at six miles an hour, not much is going to happen. And if you're talking about enforcement, who enforces the rules for no-wake zones? Who enforces the rules for Sunday morning no speeding? Who enforces those? There's nobody on the lake, please, I'm out there. If people see the sign that's going to be posted, "Six miles an hour only on the North Basin and North Pond," people aren't going to go there. The only people who are going to use it are residents who have jet skis, and there are several of us who do. And the only thing we're going to do with it is do our six miles an hour, go to the Middle Pond, and enjoy the benefits of the Middle Pond. We are not out to make any damage to anybody, and this report shows that no, there's been no incidents, there's been no safety problems, period. And as far as the lake is concerned, it is one body of water.
Okay, Chief Recardi, and then this gentleman down here, and then I'm going to suggest that somebody think about moving the question, but, no. But, so Chief Recardi first. Again, one second delay.
Is he working?
Yep.
First, I'd like to thank Dick Reynolds for all the work he's done to widen the tunnel, right? He was my first start, that thing was, like, a quasipod. But through his hard work, it's now passable to even larger boats than it was many years ago. So, Dick, thank you. As far as the sign that you talked about at the tunnel, I spoke to retired Lieutenant Colonel Arden Lee, and his comment to me, and I'll give you the quote, "Dave, you know an apple." Put apple, Roger. The Lake Management Committee put the sign up in their consent. That was his call, right? You don't see on the sign, Dave, and it says, "Per State of Massachusetts," or anything, right? We did not. I'm just telling you what I was told. I'm not looking for an argument. I gave you kudos for the job you did, right? And Paul, as far as what you have to say, I would say you know me very well, because you would never, on God's be-nerve, make that tie, right? That's all I got to say.
Okay, let's bring the microphone down here to this gentleman in the middle. Let's go to both. Both in the both.
My name's Michael Russo, I live on one thirty-nine North Lake Avenue, right on North Pond, western shore, so I have this view of the local lake. And to say that nothing has happened last summer with any, anything with jet skis is ridiculous. I have seen them wash canoes, literally swap kayaks when people have flipped over. I've seen this. So I know I'm not dreaming, I know I don't see anything. Dick, I couldn't agree with you more, this gentleman over here from Lakeview, it is a safety issue. That is all it is. It's a safety issue. And if, I don't lie, I don't make things up. I mean, there's a dozen people in here that'll tell you that, that know me. They're, it's, I've seen it. I've actually seen it happen. And to think that you should make North Pond, the whole pond, six mile per hour headway speeds, speaking, pardon me, is crazy. What about those of us that live on a lake that like to water ski, or take the kids tubing or something like that? Top speed's thirty miles an hour when you're water skiing, most people do twenty-seven. So to have, you're going to basically take everything away from everybody that lives on that pond to go six miles an hour because of somebody else that wants to come in and go on jet skis? I don't know why they would want to put jet skis on North Pond. It's so small. I've, again, I've seen, and not in their defense, but they come in, and I've seen this a couple of times, they come in, they look around, they turn around, and they go right back out again. So I honestly could not agree more. They should be prohibited, period. It's a safety issue, and I've seen it, and people are going to get aggravated and hang out on the west side of the shore on the weekends when they start getting swamped and their kids are in the water. And I'm not going out there because I'm not going to be dumping rocks and bottles and everything else. Thank you so much.
And then we are, remember, we're discussing an amendment here, so, so, does?
We can motion to move the question.
Okay, very good. Wait a second. Move it. Okay, so, here's, here's what we're voting on. You have in front of you an amendment, having to do with Article twenty-two, and as presented to me, we would replace, we would delete the existing language for twelve B and replace it with the following language, "The use of a powered craft, generally known as a jet ski, surf jet, wet bike, or otherwise described as a personal watercraft, shall not be allowed to operate on the body of water known as North Pond." The amendment would further delete in its entirety twelve dash C. Do I have that correct from the proponents? Yes.
One hundred and fifty, because in headway speed.
Well, that's not the amendment, ma'am. We've got to deal with, we got, no, we're moving the question. All in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so the motion to move the question carries. You are now voting on the amendment. You'll get a chance to discuss the bylaw some more, if you wish, but we are going to move to the vote on the amendment as presented. Unless it's a point of order, then we're going to vote. So all in favor of the amendment that has been put before you on Article twenty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I am going to call for a vote on that. Again, requires a majority vote. So if my toes were raised, we're voting on the amendment to Article twenty-two, please raise your hands if you're in favor of the amendment given to you by the proponents.
Ten.
Ten on the left and the stage. And in the center, Diane?
Forty-one.
Forty-one in the center. And on the right mic?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Those opposed to the amendment, please raise your hands and keep them there until they've been counted.
Nine.
Nine on the left and the stage. Center, Diane?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. And on the right mic?
Right.
So the amendment passes sixty-eight to three. That's nice, but we haven't passed Article twenty-two. So I appreciate the enthusiasm, this is this late in the evening. But we're now back to Article twenty-two as amended, okay? So with the amendment, you have to kind of use a little imagination now, but is it fair to say, proponents, that the Article twenty-two is now an article to prohibit personal watercraft on North Pond? I'm summarizing, but, okay. So is there any discussion on the article as amended? Okay, Doug, and then I see a hand up here, so, go ahead, Doug. Doug, go ahead, Doug.
Probably for the best. I had 10:20 in the pool to get out of here, so I apologize. For those that brought the amendment, kudos. Well, job well done. You've done your work. You've done your homework. My personal opinion is I think you're doing a disservice to those who live on North Pond that want to carry their jet ski off. Therefore, my vote will be to vote against this bylaw, which will put you back in the predicament you were in prior to this, which is there is no prohibition for personal watercraft on North Pond on Lake Condam on 477 Eagle. That being said, when we ventured into that process, I was very clear that I believe that the solution to this problem is a local bylaw, okay? And you guys have made yourselves very, very clear. And if the bylaw passes, we have achieved the end result. Not personally my result, that I was thinking we needed, but the end result that you want as citizens and that, you know, this form of government has proven that it works when it's open and transparent as the process went through. So I congratulate you. And I, while my vote may not be the one you're looking at, I think if this bylaw is successful, you will have the end result that we're all looking to achieve in the end. Thank you.
Okay. Julia, if you could get a microphone around and Charlie, you're good? Okay. Then a microphone around this way to Neil, though. Just give it a second.
Neil the Henke, 140 Summer Drive. I'm in favor of this. Did I help to amend it? You bet I did. I lived out there for 38 years. I still do. I can tell all of you who have tried to put this together at a six mile headway speed, whether it's the chief or any of you sitting at that table, that are not going to support us, you don't live there. You don't drive even a boat out there. When is the last time you took a boat through North Pond Tunnel to see how blind it really is? And if you have no reverse on a vehicle on a one-way street and you have a big thing like a pontoon boat coming the other way, how are you going to get out? That's safety. That's what we're standing on, gentlemen. We're not here to say, "We hate jet skis. We don't want them, period, on any of the Condam on lakes." What we're seeing is, we live there, we've seen it. It is safety when it comes to swimming. It's safety that even your police department can't go out there every single day and make sure that this law is going to be abided by. It's also safety for those jet skiers, because I can tell you, I hear those boaters out there. I hear them yelling. Mark and I have pulled out a couple of those canoes that have been sacked. It's no fun. So I want you to take all that into consideration when you vote tonight. That it is the people that are looking through the safety out there. We're not even out there on the weekends. We're looking for the safety for others out there. So we'd appreciate your vote and your support on this prohibition on North Pond. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to wrap the vote.
If you're changing wording on this, can you change it to no motorized vehicles on North Pond, please?
Yeah.
Because if it's, if it's not safe to have an eight-foot personal watercraft going 12 to 15 miles an hour, you had your time, then it's not safe to have a 23-foot boat with a 30-foot tow rope with another five-foot person on skis going 30 miles an hour zigging and zagging across the lake. There's a huge difference. So there should be no motorized vehicles if we're going to ban jet skis.
I'm going to take that as a more of a rhetorical question, I think.
No, I think you should add the word.
No, if it's, if it's a procedural question, then you can write an amendment, bring it up to me in writing, make a motion to amend, but, you know, as the other proponents did, but that's, that's the process for them. Any other discussion on Article 22? I think it's well, okay, one more, and then we are going to take a vote. I think this has been well discussed.
Hello?
You're on.
Hi. Martha Musier, 19 North Pond Road, Southwood. I moved, we moved to Southwood 22 years ago. 22 years ago, when we moved, we were told no jet skis, and there were no jet skis. I had a friend that wanted to move on North Pond. They were told no jet skis, so they moved to Middle Pond. I don't understand the person who lives on North Pond, bought a house on North Pond, knowing that really jet skis are not used. But I hate to say this, and please forgive me, everybody, the mentality of jet skiers is, well, if I can't have it, nobody can. Take the boat off, take this off. Oh, that's crazy. But I will say, being on North Pond, I remember the tunnel you would push through with all these fighters. Nice tunnel. And you know what's really nice is that, and I lived there, we had 50 boats that come in the summer all the time, parked all along the land there with families, their little barbecues, some happy adults. Camping has become outrageous. What are families to do? They're there, kids jump in the water, they have fun. And as far as that brown envelope, there was a jet skier that came and zoomed all around. I called the police. It was a female dispatcher. I said, "This jet ski is going crazy." She said to me, "According to the chief, there's nothing we can do." Now, that complaint wasn't even recorded. So that's how I feel about that little brown envelope, because I feel that there have been complaints that weren't recorded. So please, heal for families and let them have a safe day on North Pond.
I'm going to go to Brian Andrews on last week. Would you raise your hand, Brian Andrews? And then we're going to vote.
I'm Andrew Scowey, House Street. My husband was head of the Lake Committee, the original Home and Lake Actman. I was on it as well. I operated the REHarmister. We're all on the committee. Now, there was, there were many of us. And we worked hard to make the lake accessible to everyone, no matter what they were doing. When we say no jet skis on North Pond, it sounds like, like a mean contradictory, but we're not. Because they can still go on Nibel and on South Pond that do not have the traffic that we do on the weekends. We said 50 boats. We had more than 50 boats. We had 60, we had 70 on the weekends or on the holidays. And like you said, they, they hurry, they hurry, they know that they have to go in a certain direction. It's been safe, which surprised me, because when they did open the tunnel to make it that wide, I figured, oh boy. But they really do well. The fishing goes out early in the morning. The skiers go out usually before, right after 10 o'clock. You have the families coming around noon, and they park over on the side, and they swim, and they drink, and they enjoy. Maybe about five, because they're going home for supper, the skiers and tubers go back on, and the fishing will go back on. It has worked out quite well. The jet skis follow a different pattern. It's not that we have yet to them. It's a safety issue. And you really want the lake open for use by everyone. You say headway speed, it's just, you couldn't enforce that. It's a non-enforceable law. This one can enforce if you say no jet skis. And people are used to it. The idea of tabling it doesn't make sense, because then you have people wanting, you know, using jet skis until it comes up again in establishing new patterns that's not safe.
Okay. I'm going to call a vote on Article 22 as amended. It's been well discussed. I think everybody has had ample time to express their views on this. And so, again, let me remind you that the original language of Article 22 was amended. It is now a prohibition of personal watercraft on North Pond with some penalties and so forth specified. Requires a majority vote. All in favor of Article 22 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no.
No.
I hear a strong majority for yes, probably about 20 people voting no. I'm going to declare that a majority vote. Would anybody like to contest my determination or call for a counted vote? All right. Then that is a vote. We move on to Article 23. Article 23 deals with temporary repairs to private bylaws, to private ways bylaws. And I will not read them in its entirety, but to see, again, those of you leaving, please do so quietly so that we can finish up the business of this meeting. To see if the town would vote to add a Chapter 84, temporary repair of private ways to the code of the town of Southwood as follows, and further, the nonsubstantive changes to the lettering and numbering of the town code to be authorized to be consistent with the code of Southwood. 84-1 would be general, refers back to the Massachusetts general laws. 84-2 deals with types of repairs. 84-3 requires a petition of the abutting owners. 4 refers to betterment charges. 5 refers to status of the way, the private way. 6 deals with liability. 7 deals with an indemnity agreement. And that is requested by the PTW and the Select Board. Do I hear a motion? And a second?
Second.
Motion made, the seconded. Do you wish to speak to the article? Okay. So the Select Board will take questions on Article 23. So any questions or permits? Yes. Would you get a microphone there?
Debbie Van Etten, Starett Drive. I would just like a clarification of the definition of a private way versus the definition of an unapproved road. Is there a difference, or are we talking about the same? Is that, is an unapproved road considered a private way?
An unapproved road isn't a legal term. A private, it most likely would be a private way. This bylaw is being enacted or looking to be enacted based on the statutory provision that really doesn't allow a town to make any repairs on a way that isn't a quote-unquote "public" way. That's a private way that's open for public use, unless you have a bylaw that authorizes you to do it except for certain parameters in which it to happen.
So does it publicly?
Okay. So if you live on a private way, a way that has not been approved by the town as a public way.
When I bought my house, it was not disclosed to us that our road was unapproved. Unaccepted. It's an unaccepted road because it's too old or so ridiculous, fire phone thing. But that, it was not disclosed to us. So the town deceived us in the purchase of our home. And I don't, I don't feel that I should be responsible for paying for repairs on my road because it's not approved by the town.
Okay.
It's not a private way that I know of. I mean, people, it's open to the public. People come up and down our road all the time.
Well, if it's an unapproved way, your attorney, when you bought the house, or a title search when it was done, should have disclosed that to you. The town didn't in any way try to deceive you. The town had nothing to do with you when you purchased your house. So you had your due diligence that was done. Fortunately, it didn't uncover it. In order for the town to be able to make repairs to that way, this bylaw needs to be in place. Now, whether or not betterments are going to be assessed based on the number of people that are on the road, the frontage, all those different things, this bylaw...